Go into closed session to discuss union negotiations and we are now resuming our agenda with council comments or announcements. Is there any council comments or announcements? All right, seeing none, the next item is the adoption of minutes. We have in front of us the minutes from May 25th, June 5th, June 12th, and June 19th. It's been moved and seconded. Does anybody have any comments? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The minutes are adopted. I have a couple of minor things which I'm going to hand to Councilmember Williams on the assumption that he might have a couple of things also. The next item on the agenda is public comment period. This is the time that's set aside on the agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular special session agenda. This would include items that are on our closed session agenda and any other items that you wish to bring before the council. Are there any public comments this evening?
Yes, my name is Patty Lovelace. I live at 7620 Maple Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland. And one thing I'd like to invite you people to is we're having the 64th commemoration of the anniversary of the bombing of Hiroshima. And we're having it between 6:00 and 9:00 PM in Constitution Gardens in Washington, DC on August 5th. And also August 8th, we're having a commemoration of the bombing of Nagasaki, which happened 61 years ago on August 8th, and that's Eastern Standard Time. And that will be held at Lafayette Park, starting at 9:30 in front of the White House. And one thing people should remember and also think about what's been going on in Iraq and in Lebanon and Israel and with Hezbollah, we all got to really think about where is this going to lead us? You know, we've got to remember where our tax dollars are going, where our thoughts are going, and we're going to be continuing on the road to violence. You know, because one day we're going to wake up and the weather forecast is going to say, "It's going to be forecasted about 18 million degrees with a wind gust of 1,800 miles an hour under a bright man-made sun." And I don't want to see that. We're going to do everything we can to prevent that, and you know what that means? That's a nuclear war. And with all the threats of saber rattling going on in the Middle East today, you know, I can't help but wonder how many hours, days, or minutes we are away from somebody finally pushing that button over there or over here. And that's one thing we've got to really think about. Also, I'm proud to say that Maple Avenue is now turning into Rascoville, USA. And I'm really glad to see that. You know, it looks like it's doing really good in Tacoma Park. You know, it's going to become Rascoville, USA, you know? And I think we ought to rename it Rascoville for a while, because we see all the signs out there. And that gives me some hope that we may be able to work toward peace. And we've got to respect life on all its levels, because a society and civilization is judged on how we treat our inmates, although Virginia just killed somebody. I also want you to know that Virginia had just killed somebody, Brandon, in electric chair, the other day, and we must continue our fight against the death penalty, violence in all its forms. So come on down to the Hiroshima-Nagasaki committee's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
All right, God bless you.
My name is CJ Ross, and I thank you for taking this time to listen to me. I am the representative for the Tacoma Park employees, Ask Me Local 3399. I'm here to introduce myself tonight, because I'm brand new for Tacoma Park, and I wanted to introduce myself, and to briefly talk about negotiations. We've met five times. I'm sure that Mr. Hobbs has filled you in, and your representative, including Mr. Hobbs, has listened very attentively to our proposals and our reasons for changing certain language. I mean, he's really been very, very good sitting across the table. I've sat across the table for a lot of people, and he's been very good. Currently, we're at a point where we may come to two sticking points, so I just wanted to talk with you just briefly for a few minutes about those. First is on the merit increases that are based on the, currently based on the Employment Cost Index for State and Local Government, or the ECI. And that's based on the prior December. However, we use it in July, and that date is three to four months old. By the time it gets there in December, it covers the whole nation, and so the ECI many times doesn't keep up with costs. We suggested that the merit increases move to a Consumer Price Index for urban consumers for the area of Washington and Baltimore, or CPI, for the previous year. This is being proposed because of the extraordinary circumstances that no one, no one could have predicted. $3 a gallon for gas, utilities doubling and tripling, food costs going up. So during 1995, the employees, including the lowest paid, lost almost a full percentage of buying power, just in that year alone. And in the last three years, they've lost about 1.5% of buying power. It's a sliding and slippery scale that will cost the city dearly, because if they have to train new employees and find new employees, that'll cost the city money. Our second major sticking point will be the performance evaluations. Currently, we have three categories: below requirements, meet requirements, and distinguished. On our children's report cards, that would be an F, a C, and an A. We're proposing that we add a fourth category, and that would be exceeds requirements, which would be a B. In our perspective, here's what's happening, or in my perspective, here's what's happening. If someone tries very, very hard and meets distinguished in all of their categories but one, they are deemed to meet requirements. That next year, that person probably will not try as hard, and therefore you end up with a C employee rather than a B employee. In addition, we did a survey of our employees on the performance evaluation and merit system, and found that 76% are not satisfied with the current evaluation system, a surprising 81% of those who had received distinguished are not satisfied.
Can you sum up?
Sure, I would be glad to. We believe that most of the managers do their work plans and do their evaluations properly. As I've said before, we want to work together, and Mr. Hobbs has been very good about working with us. We look forward to working with you in the future and hope that you'll consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Hassel. I represent some landlords in Tacoma Park. And just without repeating things I've said in other weeks, I wanted to note that the issue of affordable housing, which was at one point on the rolling agenda for tonight, is now put off until, I think, September 11th, at least that's the tentative date. And what you've got before you is item 11 on the agenda tonight, second reading on exempting certain properties from rent stabilization, is truly making decisions about things without looking at the bigger picture. I know the council's been looking at rent stabilization since, I think, January or February, and it still really hasn't gotten to the point of trying to make policy decisions. And here you are enacting something which really ought to be integrated into what you do with rent stabilization, and you really haven't gotten very far with it. The proposals, I think, are inconsistent in terms of the general policy. The affordable housing, when I raised this point probably a month or so ago, the mayor pointed out that it would be on the agenda this summer, and I understand the press of business has changed that. And I don't mean to say that when the press of business mandates changing things, you have to be flexible. You do. But I think deciding this tonight without looking at the bigger picture, without deciding what the affordable housing policy really ought to be, is a mistake. You really need to think this thing through before you go off enacting things. And I'm not saying that I don't support many of the things in the bill, but you really need an ordered approach to deciding what you want to do about affordable housing. If the city policy is to just high-handedly grabbing property from landlords and redistributing it to others, then that's the city's policy. The city ought to say that in very clear terms. But I think if you sit down and look at your affordable housing policy first, decide what you want to do, what's right, what's wrong, then you ought to start scoping out exactly what your rent stabilization applies to. I fear that the city will suddenly stop what it's doing with affordable, with rent stabilization and affordable housing, because it will pass this one small little piece. And meanwhile, I don't see any big rush going on to help landlords who are being subjected now to very high utility costs, or rising insurance costs, or property tax costs. I really think this is out of, out of good policymaking procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, not seeing anyone else. We'll go on to the city manager's comments. And what I would like to do, I don't know if somebody can go find Jillian, I would like to pull the resolution recognizing her out of order and take it before we do the Maple Avenue parking study, because I think that that will, her resolution will probably be fairly brief, and then we can let her go. So maybe we will, if we can take her up right after your comments, Mr. Hobbs.
My comments tonight are brief. We're continuing to work with NOT have a meeting scheduled this coming Thursday with them to try to finish up the ends and the things that haven't been done, and we'll continue to work that. TRG is working on the punch list to finish up those things. I'm not sure, I tried to get a date on when they're going to put the elevator, start the elevator work. They ordered the cab, but they haven't started the installation yet. The Hefner, we talked last week about the Hefner automatic locks. We've gotten two proposals, one for about $7,500 and one for about $3,300. And I'm trying to sort through those to see what the difference is, to make sure that they're identical, because of the big price difference. And we hope that we will decide this week as to who's going to get it and have that in within two to three weeks. And it'll be able to start handing out the swipe cards for use of Hefner. That's all I have.
Okay. Are there any council questions of the deputy city manager, Terry?
Thank you. Wayne, maybe you can help me with the...
I think we just put a new roof on this building, and I was wondering about the apparent water damage in the conference room behind us here. What caused that?
I didn't know there was any, and I'll have to check that out soon.
Okay. It smells like a mildew damage. Yeah. Thank you.
This is actually the portion of the building, though, that isn't new. This is the old portion.
The new roof was not put on this part of the building, to my knowledge.
Not yet. I believe we, I thought we had...
I'll double-check. I'm not certain of that, Mr. Hobbs.
Okay, are there any other questions? What I would like to do next is take a little bit out of order, the first item on our special session agenda, which is the resolution recognizing Jillian Hirschberger. I know that she's here with a number of other people, and I'd like to give her a chance to, to go through this process, and then we can let her go if she would like.
No, we're going to keep her here.
Or keep her here all night, while she listens to the rest of the items on the agenda. First of all, I'd like to ask if someone wants to introduce the resolution.
Let's move.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Jillian's been here for a very long time, and we will be extremely sorry to see her go. One of the things that I think she has brought to our library is an incredibly creative and imaginative approach to children's programming. There have been any number of things that she has done that were sort of new to our experience in terms of things for children. I think there's a number mentioned here. The poetry issue, the poetry, the storytelling, a lot of the sort of festive occasions that she's brought. And it's, I think we now have one of the most creative children's programming opportunities for, of any of the libraries around here, and I think it's largely due to Jillian's imagination and her ability to bring these kinds of things in here. So I just very much want to thank you for all that you've done, and we will try and keep up the big work, the good work in your absence, but those are definitely big shoes to fill, and we very much appreciate it.
I haven't really had that much experience with Jillian in a library, but...
You don't go to children's programs?
No, I don't. But I have had the wonderful opportunity to work with Jillian on a number of other projects that were outside the library. And wonderful person, and we're really going to miss you here, but I'm glad you had the opportunity to move to another area and share your talents with a whole new set of people.
Thank you. As far as I'm concerned, Jillian epitomizes what I like about Tacoma Park, and I really am sad to see her leaving. She has the caring feeling towards the city and towards the, her work at the library that I really appreciate, and I, it's a loss to us for you to be leaving, but wish you the best in your new life.
What we're going to do is I'm going to open it up to public comments and see if there's anybody who wants to make a comment on this resolution, and then we're going to go ahead and vote on it and do a presentation, and then we'll let you say anything if you wish to at that point, all right? Does anyone would like to speak to this resolution? Okay, you want to go up to the podium there?
I'm the library director, and I hadn't really prepared anything to say, but I didn't, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to, to comment. Jillian and I have worked together for a long time. We've had a lot of adventures together, and it's really been a privilege to learn with her and learn from her for all these years. Families come into the library every day who, who tell me Jillian is one of their favorite people, and in my mind, she is one of the major reasons that we, that our library is held in the esteem it is. And we're going to miss her, but we're all planning on going to Santa Fe. There's going to be a staff library retreat there within the year, so expect to see us all gone at some point. But, you know, Jillian's been a great, a great librarian and a great friend. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Mr. Lovelace again. I was in Tacoma Park. I would just like to ask Jillian if she could bring the spirit of Tacoma Park down to wherever she's going in New Mexico, and teach the kids, you know, how to live in peace and non-violently, and give the kids, you know, a reason to grow up, a reason to really respect their community, and teach them how to become community activists, and maybe teach them how to become peace-loving activists like the rest of us. Bring the spirit of Tacoma Park down there, and maybe they can come up here and bring the spirit of their community up to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. And what I'd like you to do, Jillian, is come up here, and we will do a formal presentation.
This is very small, thank you. I can't say anything. This is, this has been my home, my family, and everything. I'm going to miss everyone.
Well, after that, we are now moving on again to business, and we are going to then now take up the presentation on the Maple Avenue parking study.
Good evening. We have with us today John Christman and Alyssa, I forgot your last name, Frank, from Greenhorn on Amera, and they have been working on a parking study for the area around, on Maple Avenue, around the community center, to determine whether additional parking can be provided in this area, to try to meet our parking need. We wanted to look at what works in the area while also taking into consideration trying to maximize safe access for people who are walking here, riding their bicycles or riding the bus to and from the area. And so we have a report that has been prepared for us, and we'll have a presentation by John Christman on it. I wanted to also note that later on this evening, I think it's the very last item, we'll talk a little bit about a proposal for our gym feasibility study, and there is also a segment of that which addresses parking, and so that is something that will be forthcoming in the fall. And so that's an additional aspect of dealing with parking that will be before us at a later time for the property that we're sitting on, the actual city property. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to John Christman, and he's got a, he's got a PowerPoint presentation, so if you'd like to come around.
We should move so we can see it. We're still a little low-tech in this room, and if the council's going to see the presentation, we've got to move down to the audience.
I'll find this thing in here. Do you know how to turn it on? Good evening, everybody. I'm John Christman with Greenhorn on Amera. What we were asked to do is do a very quick study of the availability of parking around City Hall. Again, with the expansion of the City Hall and all the facilities that are being, being done here with the recreation facilities, again, there's a need for some additional parking around the area. What we did is we kind of looked into a two-block area around City Hall to see what there was in terms of potential, and again, we were trying to look at low-cost options that could be done fairly quickly. And as part of this, we were also looking at the, not doing any impedance to any existing bicycle pedestrian facilities and making sure anything we would come up with would still allow those facilities to operate. And again, the area we did actually ran from Philadelphia Avenue up to Sherman Avenue, and then we went over to Grant Avenue on the, behind City Hall, and that was, and we went actually out down to Old Philadelphia Avenue. So it was just that small area that we looked at, which we felt was kind of a good walking distance for people to get to City Hall in case of anything. Again, we looked at on-street and off-street parking facilities, the possibility of redesigning some of your existing facilities to see if we can make them a little more efficient. And then we looked at Maple Avenue, Grant Avenue, Philadelphia Avenue, the elementary school, and the substation line. One of the, one of the questions that came up at the beginning was the possibility of using diagonal parking, and we did take a look at that. Again, Maple Avenue is about 43 feet wide, so we could get diagonal parking in there. And again, whoops, go back. There was a quick scheme that we looked at to try and put it in. The issues with that were diagonal parking, we would only be able to put it on one side of the street. Secondly, you could only access, well, you probably could, you technically could only access it from one direction, although everybody would try and get in from two. And you would not get as many spaces as if we did parallel parking on both sides of the street, which we had enough space to do. So I guess in terms of Maple Avenue, we felt that by striping parking places from Grant Avenue, Sherman were now parked and allowed, you can get some additional spaces based on the efficiency of allowing, of parking the spaces so people would know where to park. We also feel that you could get additional parking between Philadelphia and Grant Avenue. Again, with some parking restrictions that would have to be placed during the peak hours. And again, we're also recommending that some kind of time restrictions be placed on these parking spaces so that they have a turnover and more people will be able to use them. Again, there is a, there is a bus stop, and this is a location of where we're looking at different parking areas. There is now a bus stop just north of Grant Avenue in front of the apartment building, and we're kind of recommending, well, we are recommending that it be pulled back to the intersection, if possible, that will allow more parking spaces up, up in the north area there, and also put the bus stop near the crosswalk and across from the other bus What we did is we looked at the operation of the intersection in the morning and afternoon to determine if there was any, going to be any problems by taking away that right turn lane and putting parking in. As you can see, in the evening, the peak hour would drop to capacity condition, and what we would recommend there is that the parking between Grant and Philadelphia be restricted during the peak hours so that nobody would park there and allow that to still operate, and then during the off-peak hours, allow the parking. Again, we looked at the area behind the building here where there supposedly, well, I guess there is a plan to do the local park improvements, that we'll put in a new cul-de-sac and open up that area for possible parking. We looked at a couple options back there. And again, there's kind of a half cul-de-sac there, and what would happen is there would be a barricade, and then there would be the new cul-de-sac that would be kind of, I guess, to the west on Grant Avenue. And again, there could be about four parking places in there. And when, when the design for that park entrance gets done, there may be other opportunities to maybe expand that a little bit, get some additional parking back there. There is a nice tree back there that we wouldn't want to take, and that people would have to just kind of be careful of if you do any kind of additional construction. And again, we were just looking at what could get in there without doing anything, and it looks like you could probably get about four spaces in there. The other area was down around Old Philadelphia Avenue, the one-way system there. We felt that you could get the additional parking there. I think there is parking allowed there, other than the fact it would impact residents, but again, we could do certain time restrictions or make that work. And then Grant Avenue east of Maple, which you saw on the other map, we would recommend that you strip that for parking up to the residential area. And again, this is the area along Old Philadelphia Avenue. Again, I'm sorry. Piney Branch Elementary School, which is right next door across, across the Grant Avenue, there are approximately 24 existing spaces. And again, a lot of the need for the additional space, I would think, or additional parking would come in the evenings here, when you have council meetings. And again, those are, after 5 o'clock, those spaces are pretty well available and could be used. And again, that would be something that would be worked out with the school. Again, they may have some evenings where there are school events, it would not be possible, but again, there will be 24 spaces there. We did look at the pep lot across the street. Again, you could put some parking in there. You could get approximately a 10 to 13 space parking lot, again, but you're going to have to purchase right-of-way, purchase land, and you would have additional construction and some loss of green areas. This was just a quick layout we did of the possible parking area in that location across the street. One of the things, for the pedestrian bicycle access, we did look at the possibility of We were requested to look at Philadelphia Avenue. We don't think you can do bumpouts of Philadelphia Avenue, because we need to maintain the turning radiuses for the buses and everything, but we felt that bumpouts up at Grant Avenue would work. And as you can see here, the bumpouts would be Grant Avenue, and then we were also looking up at Lee Avenue for the possibility of bumpouts. And these would slow traffic, these would make a shorter crossing for pedestrians at those locations, and work out very well. As far as the buffer between the roadway and the sidewalk, you can go back to the next one. The area between Grant and Maple, we were looking at just removing the existing sidewalk and moving it back four feet so that there would be a green area between the curb and the sidewalk, rather than have the sidewalk right up against the curb as it is now. North of Grant Avenue, you would have to move the curb in about four feet and leave the sidewalk where it is, and then fill in between it. And there is enough space on the, on the street to do that. Again, that's a little more costly construction. You do get into moving curb. Again, that's a little more costly construction, you do get into moving curb, possible drainage improvements and things like that. On the section between Grant and Philadelphia, by just moving the sidewalk back, you may have some right-of-way or have to get easements. Overall, again, by adding the additional parking we've talked about, you would add an additional 15 spaces, and you'd get 32 spaces where there's now parking if you marked it. The Grant Avenue cul-de-sac, we said you could get four spaces. Additional on-streets parking, which is up Grant in those areas, you would get additional 25 parking where there's now parking permitted. Piney Branch, you would have 24, and if you did the Pepco lot, you would have additional 12 spaces. So overall, you would have 55 new spaces under this scheme and 57 marked spaces where there is current new parking. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I wanted to start off with a couple of sort of just clarification questions about the report that you gave us. One was the 60-space goal that you mentioned. I assume that was taken from?
I think that was taken from the parking study that was done at the, when the building was first remodeled, or the flooding study, I guess, parking study that was?
It was from the mandatory referral recommendation of utilization of such spaces.
Has there been, since the new part of the building has been constructed and is now in use, has there been any sort of update looking at the parking utilization now that would give us maybe a closer sense of how much additional parking might be needed?
No, and it is something we would like to do. The newest portion is relatively new, and we would need to determine when would be an accurate time to do that study. Some of it is probably not the best time. And so we certainly do want to monitor utilization of the spaces. We need to change some of the signage that's in the building, that's around the building as it is, but that's something that we want to look very carefully at. I'd like to note that when staff looked over the report, there's a number of relatively simple recommendations that made a lot of sense, that we feel would be a good idea just to move ahead with, and other things should wait for some more information and some more discussion with this body and with others. The couple of things that we thought had an awful lot of merit, the actual striping of Maple Avenue and having the parking spaces marked adds a tremendous amount of capacity. People tend not to park very neatly, and when you have the spaces indicated, you're more likely to get a good filling of the curb side with cars. In addition, the proposal to put parking in this block of Maple Avenue between Philadelphia and Grant has a lot of merit. There's two things that can be gained. Many people at this point don't go into the main door of the building because it's not at a convenient location for people who have parked. Walkers or people that have parked elsewhere come in other doors. Nevertheless, it's a pretty convenient location for people who maybe have a little difficulty of walking, but they're not handicapped, that kind of thing, and so spaces in that area would be useful. Also, on the other side, we have a nice opportunity to do something that we've wanted to do with Maple Avenue, which is improve the streetscape and put a green strip along between the curb and the sidewalk, so that it gives a mental buffer, at least, to the people walking on the sidewalk, and it also makes the area more attractive, have the opportunity to put in some trees and that kind of thing. The section that is between Grant and Lee does have an opportunity to actually move the curb out into the street and provide some, a green barrier there, and there is width in that section to allow for parking on both sides with that additional green space. That costs a little bit more because it would be moving the curb. Nevertheless, at least the city engineer's first looks at this seemed to, he seemed to feel that it wouldn't be a significant stormwater change, and that it would be doable as part of a normal streetscape work on Maple Avenue. It is something that we would speak with the community and the residents about, but it's a fairly straightforward street project. Similarly, there would be parking spaces marked on Grant Avenue, on Old Philadelphia, other areas where it is available for parking, but again, people don't park efficiently. What we would recommend is that some of the more either controversial or costly proposals, such as parking on the Pepco substation lot, and perhaps in the cul-de-sac in some kind of makeshift way, that that be postponed until we have a better sense of need. I just wanted to get, that was the staff's response to the proposal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The other, the other issue that I wanted to bring up and that was actually mentioned was the issue of the right turn from Maple onto Philadelphia, and you suggested perhaps striping that for parking and making it possible for people to turn right during high-volume areas by not permitting parking. And I think that we do have to, my observation of the traffic at that intersection would indicate that we do have to allow for some kind of right-turn lane during some times of day because it does back up there.
Correct, you may not have to restrict all the spaces, but you would have to at least restrict the first maybe five, five spaces or something like that.
Sure. Are there other questions from the council?
The 60-space estimate, did that include the gymnasium when that happened, or is that just for the current community center buildup?
It's with the gymnasium, however, the way that the mandatory referral prepared the parking estimate for the gymnasium, it was with an agreement, it was that the city would have an agreement that we would not have a large activity in both the gym and in this room at the same time. So it doesn't, so it is something that it would, you wouldn't have to have a gym to need those 60 spaces.
And then, are all the spaces free, or are any of these going to be meters spaces?
Well, that's, that's up to us to determine. It's staff recommendation that we put an hourly limit on it, but whether or not we do it by meters, I'm not sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Just one point during the presentation, I was curious of what your reasoning was for suggesting moving the curb out?
I think the issue was that they would like to make a, I guess it was more of a streetscape type of issue in terms of how to help the streetscape along here, move the sidewalk back from the side of the street and make, put some trees and tree linings and put some bumpouts in. So again, the fact of the matter was, there is room to do it, you reduce the lane width, you slow traffic through the area, and you have parking. So again, it's kind of a traffic calming, streetscape type of solution to the problem that that helps the area.
One of the things that we were all trying to work on, and consultants and staff alike, were narrowing the street width at the crosswalks so that pedestrians have a fairly short cross, which is always safer. The other thing is that, you know, it is a goal of ours to have Maple Avenue be an attractive street, and we've had some change over time, we've got some loss of trees. It's something that we've had a long-term goal to try to make that, like I said, a more attractive street. It is also in the master plan that this be our main civic street and be celebrated in that way. So that's what we were looking for. It's, it's not as essential, it doesn't make a difference in terms of the number of parking spaces, but it's a street, it's a streetscape enhancement.
Okay, and as you describe it, it also sounds like it provides that buffer between the parked cars and the sidewalk, so there's room for someone to open the door of the vehicle.
Correct, somebody could open the door and not hit a pedestrian.
Thank you.
The pedestrian friendliness of the street has been greatly increased on Carroll Avenue by doing that, by moving the street back and putting some things in between the sidewalk and the street. Bruce and then Mark.
I'm glad we're finally getting this information. I know we've wanted it for some time, and I also wanted to welcome Mr. Christman back. I, I always associate you with the SS Carroll traffic study.
That's right, that's right. That was a long time ago.
That was more than, more than 10 years ago.
That's right.
And I know that you persevered through that, and it took a while, but came up with some good recommendations, and I still get questions about, well, what if we tried this and what if we tried that, and I refer back to your recommendations and say, no, the engineer said that would work or that wouldn't work. So that work is, that work that you did then is still used.
That's okay. Glad to hear that.
So with the, with the parking on Maple, would that preclude any future striping of like a bike lane?
I think we had looked into that at one point, and again, it depends on if you narrow it down. I think at the beginning, we could have the bike lane, I think there's enough room on the section between Grant. If we narrow it down, I don't think there'll be enough room for a bike lane.
What Alana Blanchard recommends for this is that share-o marking be placed in the street lane, so that it's a, it's a bike with an arrow finger that says to share the road with the bicyclists, allowing them to go in there.
As opposed to a white, solid white stripe?
That's right.
Separate space.
And apparently, they've done some studies about what works best on this size of the street with that, and they recommend the share-o as opposed to a dedicated bike lane for safety. I can't quite explain it, so I'm happy to get you some more information.
Yeah, I'd like to see what makes a little sense, I'd like to see the information.
But the, but the share-o was also recommended by our pedestrian safety committee, they recommended the same thing.
Yeah, what happens with the bike lane is when you have parking, you have people, drivers opening their doors, and bicycles coming down this way, at least entering the road, ensuring the road, they have an opportunity to, to not have that obstruction, and you share the road. Again, we're trying to, this is not a high-speed area, they should be able to, to write.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And one thing that Councilmember Aldrich reminds me of is, and I know it's, it's going to happen, but we have an ongoing problem of lack of clarity on the no-parking zones along Maple Avenue, and we have periodic problems with that. So I hope that any markings of the parking positions will also have very clear markings of the no-parking areas.
It does really help to box out where the spaces are, so people recognize that. And yes, it does take a lot of work to kind of keep the no-parking things clear, but it is, it's much easier to see when you have the parking spaces in a space, in a box space.
Right, and if you sign it properly, you know, when you're signing restrictions, no parking here and there, I mean, people should be able to, you know, to see it. And the other thing is, as you, you know, you may want to work in restricting parking in an hour to maybe an hour right in front of the building, and then go to maybe a longer limit as you get farther down the street. So I mean, there are other opportunities to do different things over.
If I can just comment briefly on the signing of, clear signing of the parking box and then the no-parking areas, it's, it's very clearly marked at places like Willow and Carroll, and it doesn't seem to make any difference. People just love to park in those no-parking areas where it's very clearly signed and the curb is painted yellow, and people use that all the time, so.
We do give a lot of tickets out there.
And I've seen plenty of opportunities where I so want to call and say, will you please come and give some more tickets?
So you're saying there's no hope?
I'm saying I, I don't have much hope. There may be hope.
Actually, one of the things that we are looking forward to is the bumpouts at some of the intersections, which, you know, really do restrict the parking at that point.
I'm assuming that the next step would be for the staff to come back to us with specific proposals for where the stripes would go, or do you think that this is, are you, I guess, perhaps I should phrase that as a question. Does the staff want to come back to us with specific requests for parking proposals, or is this your?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. Certainly, we want to meet with the community because it's a whole discussion that needs to take place, and, and that would be communicated back with you. I'm not sure exactly the timing on that, but we want to share the information all around and make sure that people agree with it.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea. The other, the other entity that I would bring this to would be the Community Center Liaison Committee.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know that they've had a number of discussions about parking issues, and I think this would be very helpful to them and their considerations also. I think it's a good study, and I'm glad we did it.
Are you at all concerned about how close the parking on the city building side of Maple gets to the intersection? Because I can just kind of picture, you know, the light changes, and then somebody goes forward and then wants to back into the space and?
Yeah, again, there's certain standards, and I think that from a signalized intersection, I mean, almost 50 feet, before you can even have a parking place. And again, we would recommend during the peak hours that that be extended farther back to allow people to make the turn.
So in the picture here, how far back is it? I'm having a hard time. Is it about 50 feet?
It's about 50 feet would be a minimum that you can do from a signalized intersection.
And if I could just add that, as, as you go to these other groups, if you can make it very clear what you stated earlier about the particular aspects of it that we're not really considering going forward at this time, the more controversial aspects like the Pepco lot and the Grant Avenue cul-de-sac, so that people don't say, oh, here it comes again, and they're trying to push it through, that just say that that's for future.
Right, and, and we studied it because it has come up a number of times, we needed to have some facts about it, but we are not proposing it at this time.
Yeah, as, as long as we say that, we should be in good shape.
Fine, thank you.
The other thing, if I can just add one thing that's not really a parking study, but the location of the bus stop at the corner of Philadelphia and Grant on the city building side, when you're pulling out of the city building exit area, it's sometimes hard to see to the left because the bus stop obstructs that.
It's at Cedar, the exit from the park, rear parking lot onto Philadelphia?
The exit from the rear parking lot onto Maple, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, yes.
There's a bus stop right there on the left, and if, I don't know if that's, this would be the appropriate time to take a look at it, but I know from having done that myself that you can't see to the left as you're pulling out.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do much with that because of how the bus needs to move in that area. And it is important to keep the bus near the crosswalk.
Right, no, I, I'm not suggesting we move the bus stop. It may be that coming up with a different bus shelter that doesn't have obstructions in it would be the way to go.
We'll look at that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. This has been extremely helpful, and I appreciate it. We are now going to the interview. We have Pastor Delafield here to talk to us about his interest in the Health Services Impact Committee. You want to come up here to the table and, or to the podium, whatever you're more comfortable I had an opportunity to work with you on a number of issues having to do with the Old Town Historic issues with historic Tacoma a number of years ago, and I remember how helpful your perspective was, but I have to say, from looking at the information, I didn't realize that you had such a background in, in the health area. So that certainly is useful to know also. Just in general, do you want to talk a little bit about your interest in the Health Services Impact Committee and what you'd like to bring to it?
Okay. Appreciate the invitation to be here and interview. I've been, as the mayor, kind of intimated, part of the community here at Tacoma Park for a while, since 1991, actually. And I'd like to, I hope that, I assume that the council members and you, Mayor Porter, received a, you've received a resume and a cover letter. And I communicated back to Jesse my apologies for missing last time, and I don't know, she's had an opportunity to convey that to all of you, but I do want to apologize for being here last week. I fully intended to be here, and all I can say, I had a short memory lapse, I guess, and missed it, and I apologize. Yes, I have, I am interested, Joy Austin Lane suggested at the post office one afternoon that perhaps I might be interested in serving on this committee, and I happened to be here at the council chamber, council meeting at the time that the discussion took place about, about setting this and a... about setting this and a neighborhood committee up, I guess. And I'd just like to say, as far as the, as this committee is concerned, that I do recognize that there isn't room for the hospital to expand on that location. Some of you know I have served on the board of Historic Tacoma for a number of years, and I'm interested in the history of the community and the Adventist history here. And it's very interesting, way back in 1904, I guess, when they were laying out the plans for the campus of the college and the hospital, Mrs. White observed that these two institutions were going to grow, and A.G. Daniels, who was then the president of the General Conference of Seventh-day Adventists, had sent her a drawing, which I think probably is essentially the plan that was followed for, the original footprint there. And she was living in the Napa Valley, actually in the hills, looking at Napa Valley, and she had her son walk her from her house down to her mailbox, and it was about the same distance as the college and the hospital on the plan. And she said, "I think, I like the plans, but it seems to me those institutions are going to grow, and I think they're too close together." So, it was a need that at least one person, a situation that at least one person recognized. But be that as it may, I personally, because of my interest and involvement in the Adventist community as well as Tacoma Park, would like to see personal bias or representation of some kind of Seventh-day Adventist health care remain in the Washington metro area versus the suburbs. And if I had my brothers, I'd like to see that in Tacoma Park. And of course, we don't know that, what the outcome of all of that will be, but I have a real interest in whatever can be done to minimize the impact if the hospital does move from the area. And would, for that reason, be interested in serving on a committee to help ensure that the impact is minimized if they move, and that the health care needs are, will continue to be met. I served as associate pastor at the Tacoma Park Church from 1991 to 2001, was a member of the Board of Historic Tacoma from '92 to 2003, and I've conducted a number of Adventist heritage events and so on in the area. So, I have a kind of a longstanding interest in Tacoma Park. I'm sure that there are other persons who are very well, have good qualifications, other candidates, and other persons who served a long, have been involved in the community for a long time. But I don't think, I don't know that anyone would be more committed to the Adventist philosophy and Adventist concepts of holistic health, so on, and/or as well as having some acquaintance with and interest in the city. So, be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, and happy to be here.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your volunteering. Are there questions from the council, Terry?
Thank you, and thank you for volunteering for this important committee. Just like to make sure that the volunteers do understand that this particular committee is not so focused on the hospital move as it is on the health care needs of the community. I think, you know, even if the hospital were to change its plan and say that they were going to stay, I think this is an important committee, and it's important work still to look at the health care needs of this community and see how we can ensure the long-term availability of health care for our residents. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear in your mind, that...
I appreciate you pointing that out.
Yeah, and this isn't necessarily thinking about how we're going to, how we're going to use the grounds or any of the other possibilities that people have...
I understood that, right. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
One question that I've asked the other folks who've interviewed for this committee is, we're going to, you know, the ground rules for this committee is that we have, you know, a few people on the committee, I think we said 12 or 15 or something in that, in that general range. But we're also trying to represent a variety of different interests and different communities on the committee. And one of the things that I would be interested in was any ideas or thoughts you might have on sort of how this committee could do outreach, how it could incorporate the concerns of sort of the wider community in some of its consideration.
I would think that it would probably be, well, I think the hospital has kind of committed itself to attempting to address the needs of underserved populations, and I would think that it would be great to include people from Langley Park and minority communities in the membership of the committee, it seems like it would be, or at least, or persons who are appointed with how best to serve the needs of those communities.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea also. We, the committee is going to have ex officio representation from the group that Adventist Hospital, Washington Adventists, has set up, which is the, I think it's the Health Disparities Working Group. And actually, there's someone who's interviewed for the committee who is, was actually a part of the original task force that set that group up, who is interested in being on the committee, which would also give us some additional representation from that point of view also. So, I think those are all good sort of aspects of the community to have represented. Okay, well, I appreciate your coming here, I appreciate your volunteering. I think that your various, various parts of your background would be very useful on the committee. We are going to do the appointments, I believe, next week. As a matter of fact, we have to do them next week, or they won't be done before the summer. So, then what we're going to do, there's also a group at the county level that the county executive office is forming to take a look countywide, and we would very much like to have this group work with the county group, so that the county group incorporates the point of view of the community in Tacoma Park, and so that the, our committee is aware of the information that the county group is developing. So, I'm not sure what their timeframe is. I understand that they're going to get going fairly shortly if they haven't already. But those are two things that we're going to be interested also in working with. So, we wanted to get our committee at least up and running. We may put some additional people on in the fall, but we wanted to at least get it up and running before the council goes on recess for August. So, we will be doing the appointments next week. I mean, you don't need to be here, but we will be doing appointments next week. So, thank you.
I think you're getting an early start, and I commend the city for looking ahead like that.
Well, thank you, appreciate that. Appreciate your volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution supporting House Bill 5680, Human Rights and Democratic Freedom in Ethiopia. Councilmember Siemens, did you want to present this?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I appreciate the opportunity. The Ethiopian government held elections in May of 2005. It was intended to be a democratic process to elect new officials to the government. There had been many allegations of problems with that election, and serious allegations of not only with the election, but human rights violations. And the world has responded, the European Union and United Kingdom have taken steps to encourage the Ethiopian government to recognize human rights and also recognize the elected, the people who were elected from the opposition party in the election in 2005. And House Representative Christopher Smith, in the U.S. House of Representatives, has put forward a bill, House Resolution 5680, calling for human rights and democratic freedom in Ethiopia. We have large Ethiopian community within Tacoma Park, both within Ward 4 and Tacoma Park at large, and they have been doing work to help their homeland, this is something that affects them living here because of their families and friends that live back in Ethiopia. And so, I would like to move a resolution encouraging the House of Representatives in Congress to support House Bill 5680, calling for the human rights and democratic freedom in Ethiopia. Senator?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional council comments on this resolution? I'd just like to say that I very much appreciate this issue being brought to the council's attention by a number of people from the Ethiopian-American community in Tacoma Park. And they were, they provided members of the council with a fair amount of information on this issue, and it certainly does seem to be the sort of issue where the city of Tacoma Park needs to act in accordance with the concerns of a community within our borders and respond to their concerns and their needs, and I'm happy to support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, residents of Tacoma Park. We have been here about two weeks ago to speak for the voiceless of the Ethiopian people. They needed our support. I'm glad I've repeatedly talked, we talked to Mayor Porter. We appreciate her door was wide open for us in the evenings. I appreciate Terry Siemens. We almost invaded his house voluntarily to hear our complaints. Our people has been in despair, especially the opposition leaders right now languishing in jail with Trump up charged our professors in Ethiopia, who's taught in the university for over 30 years. Their age is about 30 years, 70 years old and more. One of the founders of Ethiopian Human Rights Council, 1991, is very, he wrote so many books about Ethiopia. He got so many problems, and he couldn't even get a health care. These are the kind of people we are losing in jail for nothing. And the Bush administration, in support of fight and anti-terrorism, refused to hear the egregious and the violent human right violation by speaking, lacking moral decency. But today, the world is speaking. I'm glad Tacoma Park, council members, mayors, and residents, they have stood for social justice in the past. I have witnessed, I've been a resident of Tacoma Park over 25 years. I know the three Burma San Sushi, even though the democratically elected lady, she's still languishing in jail, they showed their voice. I'm hoping today, tonight, as we unanimously say, I want you to support that. Ethiopia, as we said two weeks ago, is a very rich nation, number one in water resource in Africa, sixth largest in the world. We couldn't feed ourselves because of bad governance, lack of human rights, rule of law. And that area, as you know, is a strategic location in the Middle East, and it's becoming a breeding ground for terrorism left and right by suppressing people's human's rights. And we, the Ethiopian diaspora at large, not only here, nationwide, we are focusing, are working hard to pass this Bill 5680. I appreciate your support. Thank you, Mayor Porter. Thank you, council member. Special thanks for Terry Siemens. We need your support. We got to stop the injustice. Injustice anywhere is going to affect us here. And a democratic Ethiopia means it's a place where there would be no fertile ground for terrorism. And we have witnessed in the past what the Bush administration was doing. They support Shahawi Iran, we know where Iran is. They support Saddam Hussein, we know where Iraq is. They supported Pinochet and a democratically elected government. We know where Pinochet is. So, we don't want to repeat that again and again. Thank you for raising the bar, the bar, and speaking for the voice of the Ethiopian people. I thank you on behalf of my friends.
Thank you. Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Sorry, Billy Sambut, Ward 4, Residence 7728, Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought by now you know my name.
I know, but you have to do it for the record. Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate for the time, and as Bill has mentioned, two weeks ago, I was at the same spot, talking to you about the problems back in Ethiopia. And as you know, our policy today determines the better tomorrow. What I've done is exactly that. And on the behalf of many thousand Ethiopians living in this metropolitan area, several of them in Tacoma, in the city of Tacoma, I would like to thank the council members as well as Mayor Porter for your stand with us and with 77 million Ethiopian. And the resolution, the HR, the Bill HR 5680, is intended to advance human rights and freedom and democracy in Ethiopia. And Christopher Smith, Congressman Christopher Smith, who proposed initially this bill as HR 4423, stood with 77 million Ethiopian and also for human rights and justice everywhere. And what the council members and the mayor did today is for us, a victory for the people who want to fight for justice and freedom is a one step ahead, and I would like to thank you again on the behalf of several Ethiopians in Tacoma area. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right.
My name is Casa Yarri.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? All right, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the resolution passes. And thank you all very much for bringing this to our attention. The next item on our agenda is a first reading of an ordinance establishing a residential permit parking area. We had an extensive discussion of this issue at a work session, and there is a proposed ordinance in front of the council. There is one issue that was mentioned in the cover sheet, and that is the period of time that the permit parking area would cover. Now, I understand, since the last discussion that we had, I understand from a note that we got from the city attorney, that we can change the underlying ordinance with this ordinance also and others. We don't have to do two separate ordinances, one to establish the permit parking area and the other to establish the hours for the permit parking area, that we can, in fact, establish the hours through a second section of this ordinance also. And so, my assumption, and I turn to Councilmember Clay, my assumption is that we would do this on a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week basis. Was that your intent?
That was what we had talked about, but I have gotten feedback from folks that the real issue is evenings and... But I have gotten feedback from folks that they, the real issue is evenings and weekends. And there was a question whether or not you could do the evenings during the week and the weekends. And there's a couple of people here from the Forest Park area, and I guess I would kind of like to hear from them, since there are a couple of the community leaders there. My understanding is also that we can change it at the next ordinance if we were to get a lot of feedback.
We can. And so we can put something in the first reading and then clarify. I would be guided by your advice in terms of what the wording should be on the first. We have to put something on the record, and then we can just go ahead and discuss it.
What about the half-block issue that was raised?
That's not this?
The different house one?
Yeah. My understanding that is that that is a bit of a more complicated issue. I had a discussion, a brief discussion with the city clerk, and I had a little bit less brief discussion with Captain Corsi. And I think that that's something that we're probably going to have to have a separate discussion on. And, yeah.
So as it's set up right now, it's looking like 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., seven days a week?
Okay, so you want to leave it the way it is in the...
I want to leave it the way it's written and get feedback from people next week.
Okay, all right. So you're moving it with the language as it's written? Is someone on the second?
Yes, I move it with the language.
Okay, it's been seconded. Okay. Is there anyone on the council that would like to make any comments before we go to public comment? Did you want to say anything?
You know, there's been a lot of input into this process, and the comments back from the city attorney are great because it means we can go forward with the signage and not have to do it twice and take care of it right now. It's just kind of a short time period to get information back from people. And so I'm very pleased that we're able to move forward and that we have the flexibility to make an adjustment next week if we need to.
Okay. All right, I'm opening up this first reading ordinance for public comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Do you want to go up to the podium there?
I'm Sandra Felipe, 501 Belford Place. I have a statement I'd like to read from my neighbor, Ms. Chelsea Nichols, at 503 Belford Place. And then I have a couple of questions that I would like to have clarified about the Chelsea states, "The parking situation in our neighborhood has become an increasingly difficult problem over the years. Not only do many of the residents find themselves without a parking spot in the evenings when they return to their homes, we find that non-resident parkers have little respect for the neighborhood. I've repeatedly picked up trash from my yard and others, and I've actually witnessed the drivers throwing trash in the neighborhood. In addition, the noise level on weekend evenings, people parking throughout the night is very disruptive. We need to have permit parking established in our neighborhood. Permit parking would allow the residents of our community to have a place to park and will minimize the littering of our property. Thank you for your consideration. Chelsea Nichols, 503 Belford Place." When I read over the documents, I had a couple of questions. In section, in one of the whereas areas, it says petitioners are required to provide evidence to substantiate at least one factor being used in the evaluation process. Have we met that criteria at this point, or do we have to do something else? The criteria, the factors are listed in the residential parking, permit parking area Regulation 991, B1A through G.
I think you've met all the requirements.
We have.
My understanding is that they have met all the requirements at this point. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, you have.
Last Monday, one of those speaking in opposition was concerned because he has trailers and boats. And I see that in Regulation 98-1, that trailers and boats are exempted from the permitting process. So I don't know who that gentleman is, but we really need to let him know that that concern is taken care of in the regulation. I guess, what kind of comments? Currently, you're having the ordinance state 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. What form of communication do you need to react to that? Email, telephone calls?
Yeah. You can call me. You can email me. You can email the city clerk. I think you can call the city clerk, although I'm sure she prefers email if you can do that. So. One of the things about this 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. is that a lot of people talked, who were generally supportive about how they wanted people to be able to visit them in the day as well. And most people who talked about the problems really talked about it being an evening and an overnight parking issue, and then also a commercial vehicle issue. And we have kind of another angle now on the commercial vehicle issue.
Though my other neighbor, Mr. Saunders' family, weren't able to come tonight, I'd like to speak on their behalf because we have extensive communication between our families. They have issues 24 hours a day because their father, an elderly gentleman, has nurses that come in shifts all day long. And we appreciate and respect your idea about painting the curb blue. But the caregivers do not qualify, they do not meet the criteria for having ADA hang tags or plates. So that would further exacerbate that particular family's problem during the day. You know, the blue line, blue painting isn't going to really help them.
They have, they have two vehicles and onsite parking though as well. Is that correct?
They have off-site parking, off-street parking, which will accommodate if you really, really force it to small students.
Right. It would be possible though, and this isn't the only solution to this, but it would be possible for them to get tags for their own vehicles so that they could reserve an on...
The grandchildren, yes.
An on-premise site.
The grandchildren, but the caregivers that are paid nurses that come do not meet the criteria to have tags because they are not disabled and they do not transport Mr. Saunders.
I understand, but they could, the other folks who do transport Mr. Saunders could park in the blue painted space and reserve a space onsite for the...
Right. They would have to follow MVA procedures and get hang tags or plates. That is...
We'll keep working on that issue.
Yeah, I just don't want anyone to forget that family. And I'm glad that you are moving in this direction. Some of the comments from last week that were starting out suggesting maybe just limiting commercial vehicles, that would just simply open up a parking space for another non-commercial vehicle, so it doesn't really get to the heart of the problem. So I really appreciate the fact that you're moving forward on this. And I will take the opportunity this week to communicate with you my family's desires. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue?
Yes, I got one suggestion. It's Mr. Lovelace, Tacoma Park, Maryland. As far as dumping trash and violating the neighborhood's rights, I would suggest that people use video cameras and taking down license plates and even cameras within their cell phones and stuff to document this, document the littering, not only in that neighborhood, but all over the city. Because I walked up the street sometimes in cross parking lots, and I found trash dumped from cars. So a lot of cars are so full of junk that when they open the door, the crap just falls out all over the street and everything. And people need to document that with video cameras and take it and use existing laws and put teeth in the existing laws and enforce the law and make sure that the people clean it up, take down the numbers, and get these people and ticket these people. Make them pay for it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on this?
Yeah, my name is Mimi Iklekasa. I live at 6719 Conway Avenue. Just first to say thank you for letting this all happen quickly and easily. And also, I apologize, I was actually out of the country when you had the public hearing. One question that I had was that I saw in the Forest Park email that there was a discussion of upper and lower Conway being differentiated because there was some concern of the upper Conway, at least one resident, about not wanting to have it up there. Could you just update me quickly on what ever came of that? If they will be separated or if, I guess especially if upper Conway isn't, doesn't start doing the permitting and we find that we have problems, how easy would it be to implement the rest of Conway? What kind of process would that take?
My understanding, and I hope the clerk will correct me if I don't get this quite right, is that the way that a block is described in a law is based on the numbers of the houses. Is that correct?
That's what we think.
Right, okay. The law is not completely clear. This is something that's going to take a little bit of research and a little bit of figuring out.
Sure.
There's also issues of having to define, if we decide to address this by redefining or defining more clearly, perhaps I should say, a block in the law, we would then need to work with the police department to make sure that the block was defined in such a way that the officers could distinguish it also. So there are a number of issues still outstanding. And the decision that I made in pulling together the agenda was to go ahead and move forward with this, leaving the definition in the law intact to get it in place. And then we, the various parties, meaning the clerk's office and the police department, will work on figuring out this block issue. And we will then have to come back in the fall and likely do something with it. Not clear at this point what.
Okay. And then the second question that I had was sort of a similar one, that if the surrounding blocks, the Circle Avenue, which is adjacent to Conway and Prince George's, if, just off the top of my head, do you have any sense of if we found that people were just moving further out? I'm guessing that it would just be the same sort of process, the same time period, exactly.
Yes, yes. We could add additional blocks to the limited, restricted parking area simply by those blocks going through the same process.
Okay. And then the final question that I had, just for clarification, was is this going to be a two-hour visitor except for permits, or is this going to be just straight-out permit-only? In other words, by the metro, they have, you can, two-hour except...
Most of our parking areas do have visitor parking, two-hour permits. Well, let me back up. There's two issues. One is that you can get a visitor permit that will allow someone to park in the residential area. There are also parking, residential parking areas that allow two-hour, non-permitted parking within them.
That's, that's the one I'm...
Okay, all right. My, I don't remember how the law is written for this particular, for this particular one.
I don't think he contemplated that for this.
Okay, so it isn't, it is not included. So it sounds to me like that the two-hour, non-permit parking wouldn't be allowed here. Maybe I should look at Captain Corsi and see if that, if he has it any different ear. He says, no, he doesn't have a different knowledge. I think what we can say to you at this point is probably, it appears from the language that we've got, that the answer would be that there wouldn't be two-hour, non-permitted parking allowed. But that's something that we should put on a list to check before second reading. Let's check with the city attorney on that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the comments that we heard over and over again were about people going to parties, which, you know, they're going to, they're going to fit in, they're going to squeeze into that two hours because they don't have to be tagged by the police department. There's not a meter ticking or anything, so they'd have to be marked and then they'd have to come back around.
Yeah.
I think it would be probably pretty difficult to enforce that in the evenings when they're having the trouble.
The other thing that the police will do for parties is if you call the police department and tell them you're having a party, the hours of the party and the location, they usually will extend what they call extend courtesy. In other words, they won't ticket during that, around that location during those hours.
Yeah. The only reason that I actually thought of it was if you do get a lot of feedback and the 24-hour is considered, that that might abate some of the concerns around 24-hour and still having some flexibility of people coming in and out. So that's why I wanted to bring that up.
It would be my hope that between the commercial vehicle and the 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., that, you know, hopefully people will feel that's enough. But if they won't, then we'll come back and make the changes. But to address your, impart your issue too, is that, you know, commercial vehicles aren't the whole issue, and that was, that was clear. So try to get both of them. And maybe if we're lucky, we'll pull enough of those cars off of the street that there'll be enough space for people to be parking now and have better access to their own houses.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there anyone else would like to speak to this ordinance at first reading? All right, is there any additional council comments? All right, so this is the first reading of the...
Just one quick one, and I'll put it in here. And it's not to this one per se, but it's the inclusion here and in other areas of other agenda items tonight. I noticed that in the copying of the code sections, I keep seeing references to city administrator, and I thought we had changed those to city manager in the recodification process. And it's just a question for the clerk to answer at a later time about the status of that supposed change.
I'll answer it later.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, the question is before the council is on the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ordinance passes at first reading. We'll have it up for second reading next week, and we'll see if we can't get an answer to the question about the two-hour, non-permitted parking. All right, the next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance talking about one or more speed humps on Woodland.
Okay, so I'm so excited I get to move an ordinance for speed bumps, one of my least favorite traffic calming devices. However...
That's what happens when you're in a lucky...
It's very important to the people in the community, and I think they've worked together really well to work out with neighbors, for the most part, how it'll work out. I know they're really looking forward to bicycle-friendly speed bumps, and I think we've worked all of that out too, which I think is good because then we'll have speed bumps that are less damaging to our own vehicles and that you can still get over on bicycles and motorcycles and that will be ADA accessible. And so I'm kind of excited about moving in that direction with the speed bump. So maybe we'll have better speed bumps. And so with that in mind, I moved this, this ordinance for speed bumps at 6,700 and 6,800 Woodlands.
All right, and are you, are you moving the revised ordinance on the, on the orange sheet?
No. I don't have an orange sheet. Okay. Yes, I'm moving the revised ordinance.
Okay. And the, and it should be noted that the revised ordinance doesn't state the number of speed humps, and the idea is that, that we are doing an ordinance for some number of traffic calming devices and that it will be worked out between the city engineer and the residents of the street as to what and where those are located.
That's right. So we'll be back out in the, in the community to talk with people about this before the paving starts.
Yes. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded for the ordinance regarding speed humps in the 6,800 block of Woodland. Are there any council comments on this?
Are we up to our 500th speed bump yet?
I don't think so. We just passed 100 a few years ago. Is there any public comment on this ordinance at first reading? All right.
Just one comment on the speed bumps. When you put the speed bumps in, try to remember, you know, when people are dead that, try to make them for people friendly, please, as well as bicycle and automobile friendly.
Yes, thank you for that comment. The neighbors in this area did express an interest in having more gradual speed humps as a, as a sort of experiment in their street to figure out whether it was Woodland or...
Because if they're two-speed, put somebody like me in the operating room again.
I understand what the issue is, yes. Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Yes.
So, I mean, I'm confused because a while ago, we said we were going to set a speed bump standard.
Right.
Then we tried to design another speed bump. And now we're experimenting with another speed bump.
The discussion was about experimenting with the county's speed bump, which is much more gradual. It doesn't have a blip at the beginning. It's much more gradual all the way across. And the folks, I can't remember if it was Conway or Woodland.
It's Woodland as they come around more bicycle accessible.
And they, there was a concern about there being bicycle accessible, and they asked us if we would put a more gradual speed bump than the standards Tacoma Park speed bump that had no blip at the middle.
I'm not averse to a standard speed bump because ones that make it still hit the bottom of my car.
They didn't want the standard.
Even if I go to a stop.
They didn't want the standard, they wanted something more gradual than that.
But how, but how are we going to deal with it? Because we cannot have continually doing different speed bumps.
We have opted out. We have opted out.
But we said we didn't want to do that anymore.
I don't know if the... I don't know if the Public Works Director would like to address that, because we did talk, talk this to death when we...
I thought so.
And I think, I think we're fine where we are.
Yeah, given that we're actually using a county standard design for this particular speed bump that's been discussed, we have a comfort level with that. There's a design in place that's been engineered, that's deemed ADA acceptable, so we can use the county standard as a way to implement this type of speed bump in conditions where people want traffic calming but don't want the city standard speed bump they want.
So are we now going to offer people a choice of several?
We've always offered people speed tables, speed humps, and speed bumps is traditionally the way it's been phrased. Speed bump is the city standard, which is more jarring, and, and speed hump is the county standard, which is more parabolic and, and equal distance. If we were designing on the fly, you, you wouldn't have my support, but since we can use the county standard as a way to, you know, call out exactly what we're going to put in place, and have places where people can drive them around Montgomery County and understand what that type of speed bump is like, then we can use that standard.
I'd like the ones on Sligo Creek Parkway. You'd use that as a reference.
Yep, Sligo Creek Parkway, the other side of Ritchie Avenue, just over Puny Branch.
The humps are fine with me, it's, it's just this, having thought we set a policy and having changed it once and now changing it again.
We used it once, in fact?
The city standard? Oh, numerous times, probably half a dozen since it was established, yeah, yeah.
So we, we really are, but I, but I agree, I think in this instant, having, having two standard options is a good idea. So that's my understanding of what they want. Okay, I don't see any other comments. Are there any pub, are there, sorry, council comments on this ordinance? All right, all those in favor of the ordinance authorizing the installation of traffic calming in the 6,800 block of Woodland, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ordinance passes at first reading. We have now the ordinance in front of us authorizing speed bumps on Conway. Did you want to move that?
Yes. I'm sorry, I thought we were doing them together, so...
No, they have to be separate, so they're, Conway is on the back of, of Woodland.
Right, so I would like to, to move the speed bumps for Conway Avenue.
And it's been seconded. All right, is there any council comment? Is there any public comment? All right, seeing no public comment, all those in favor of the installation of speed bumps on Conway, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this ordinance also passes at first reading. Now, I'm going to, I'm planning to schedule second reading on both of these next week. The next item on the agenda... The next item on the agenda probably will require us to talk to the Public Works Director, so can I interrupt? I need to grab Darryl for a moment, because she's, she's up next. This is the, the ordinance authorizing procurement of a loader.
Yeah, I, I think you all have at least the background from our package item. In May of this year, our backhoe caught fire while being operated in the leaf mulch area. The backhoe was deemed total loss by the insurance company. There was an operator in it at the time that was successful in removing himself, but the flames were lipping up at his feet as he jumped out of the piece of equipment. There's no clear way to identify the source of the fire. The insurance company was looking at that an hour prior to the fire. The, the backhoe had been serviced, blown out as we normally do to remove the debris and dust from around the manifolds and the radiators. Because the engine is in the front of the backhoe, we have significant issues with clogging and dust and overheating of equipment, given the kind of way that we use the, the equipment. It's likely that some piece of debris or, or, you know, was underneath the, the vehicle and, and lit fire in the manifold and, and caused what we appear, what appears to be the hydraulic tank, hydraulic fluid to, to catch fire, and, and the gas tank did not blow, but the, the tires did, and the hydraulic lines were fried, as was the rest of the cab. That being said, after the accident, we spent a significant amount of time within the department talking about vehicle replacement, equipment replacement, and what we needed, and it became quite clear to me that the, the ideal piece of equipment for our uses, which is largely loader uses, was instead to consider and, and propose purchasing a loader for the city versus a backhoe. A quick, a quick study, the loader is a, a thing that has the engine on the back, a very large scooping bucket in front, and is generally used for things like loading salt, filling tub grinders, putting mulch in trucks, all the things that we currently use our loader for. The option that we lose when we go from a loader, from a backhoe to a loader, the backhoe also has a digging arm, which is on the other end of the piece of equipment, and that is used for digging trenches, removing, you know, small heavy items that can be picked up with a sort of claw, more claw-like bucket. We had in the budget this year, prior to all this, funds requested to purchase a backhoe attachment for our Skidsteer, which is the small bobcat that we use. Given that the amount of trench digging that we do is very minimal, and in fact, when we do street repairs, we don't use the backhoe for that, the uses for the backhoe bucket have been, been reduced over time. So it, it seems like now is the time to make the shift from the piece of equipment that we had been using traditionally to, to the loader equipment. What you find with loaders is that they're, they're more heavy-duty, they're more substantial pieces of equipment, and as I mentioned, they're really geared towards the uses that we are currently involved in. And, and it's been our recommendation at this point that the replacement vehicle should be a loader versus a backhoe. We were lucky in that we identified several manufacturers who have loader bids that were competitively bid in, in the area, and so we could basically compare a couple of different manufacturers' type of equipment and select the one that we thought was the best piece of equipment for the city, as well as had the longest warranty. So that's why we have the, the recommendation before you to go with a John Deere loader, which is, would come through equipment called Standard Equipment, a company we've purchased numerous pieces of large equipment from. There was also the option for Caterpillar, but the warranty in that particular piece of equipment was not as long. The warranty in the, the John Deere equipment is four years versus one year, and that alone was a determining factor for us in moving forward. The prices were just about, you know, $100 here or there, pretty, pretty close from their, their bid price. So it's our recommendation that we present this to you all and answer any questions you might have, and, and proceed with the loader purchase. The other issue, of course, is the funding for this item. The backhoe was in the equipment replacement reserve. Of course, it wasn't scheduled to be replaced until the year 2014. Obviously, its, its fire moves that up on the list. The council had determined that they were going to put a substantial contribution into the equipment replacement reserve this year, I believe a $300,000 contribution. A significant portion of those funds will be used to purchase the backhoe. We are getting a insurance payment of $44,000 minus $1,000 to buy back the piece of equipment, so that's a $43,000 amount of money that we're getting from the insurance company towards the replacement. We purchased back the burnt backhoe because we were able to sell it for salvage parts, and in fact, have generated a bid for $3,000 for that piece of equipment. So overall, we've come out $2,000 ahead. That's not a financial piece that I put in the ordinance, but if the, the finance officer wants to do it that way, we can certainly add those funds, excuse me, into the way that we'll put together the package to purchase this piece of equipment.
I just wanted to add that it's also my understanding that the downtime on the loader versus the backhoe because of the rear engine placement means that you can do a lot more continuous operation than with the old piece of equipment.
That's my understanding as well. Traditionally, with the backhoe, you would have to stop every hour to give it a 15, 20-minute cool-off period, just to keep the, the engine at the appropriate running temperature. With the loader, that's not supposed to be an issue at all. We should be able to do continuous run cycles with that piece of equipment, so there'll be less need to pull it out in the middle of operations, blow it off, which we had to do with the backhoe, and, and just keep it operating. It should streamline and speed up what we're, what we use it for.
Seems like it's a much heavier-duty piece of equipment.
Yes, yes.
Would like to move the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is any additional council comments or questions? I just want to clarify that the money, the money, most of the money for the loader is coming from the equipment replacement reserve for monies that was allocated to purchasing new backhoe, and that's where $87,000, et cetera, is coming from, and the additional 43 is from the insurance that we received from the damage or the totaled backhoe. So the, so the total of 130 is all coming from equipment replacement or insurance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Any additional council comments? Any public comments on this ordinance? Because this was not a budgeted item, it's going to be a two-reading ordinance, so this is the first reading of the ordinance. So all those in favor of the purchase of the loader, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance passes at first reading now. Go ahead and schedule second reading again for next week. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance establishing the Tacoma Park Board of Elections. We had a discussion with the city clerk about this a few weeks back, and this is the ordinance that we had talked about. Is there, someone want to move the ordinance?
Move.
Someone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on the ordinance? This is something that the city clerk recommended to us, and that will give us a much more formal way of handling election procedures and elections, and so I think it's a good step forward for us. All right, is any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, was there, is there a comment on the ordinance?
Yes.
Do you want to, do you want to come to the podium here and identify yourself for us?
We need some time to study this, because I just got all these documentaries, and we can't attend all the city meetings every week, sorry. Is there any writing comments?
The, this is the first reading of the ordinance, and we'll have a second reading of the ordinance next week.
Can we submit our...
Yes, you can, you can submit comments to the city clerk or to any members of the council in, in writing or by email before next Monday.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll do this again. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ordinance passes at first reading, and I'll schedule the second reading for next week. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of the ordinance that adopts the Articles of Chapter 19, which would set up a memo, would allow us to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County on discharge, pollution discharge into the waters. We've, we've gone through first reading of this ordinance, and this is the second reading. Councilmember Clay is moving it, and Councilmember Williams is seconding it. Are there any additional council comments? We've had a extensive work session discussion, and also, this has been through first reading. So are there any additional council comments? Is there any public comments on this ordinance at second reading? All right, since this is second reading, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lay. Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Orich.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Ordinance passes at second reading. The next item is the second reading of an ordinance to exempt certain properties from rent stabilization.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council comment on the ordinance? Terry.
Yes, I would just like to clarify, since people may be confused, I recused myself last week, but having talked this over with Mayor Porter and reread the resolution, I see that my property would not be affected whether or not this passes, so there is no reason to recuse myself, and so I will be voting this week.
All right. Is there any additional council comment? I believe we've discussed this issue. See Sarah here, is there something you wish to bring to our attention, or you want to talk, there is, I see a small change in the wording of the law.
Apologies for being late. We have done, we have clarified in response to the questions that were brought up by the council and comments from the public regarding the issue of changes in the configuration of existing rental facilities, be it the demolition or the addition of new units to that particular facility. And as a result of that, we've added an additional whereas, specifically stating that while you want to encourage the construction of new rental units, you do not wish to displace tenants from existing rental units. And then if you turn to page three of the actual ordinance, we've expanded the language to define a newly constructed rental unit as something that does not have an impact on the configuration, change in the description, change in the identification of an existing rental facility. So for example, if you have a landlord that has a large two-bedroom unit, and as part of a renovation effort, they decide to make a two-bedroom unit into a three-bedroom unit without necessarily changing the footprint of that particular facility, that's not considered a new, newly constructed unit and would not be exempt. If they were to combine two existing units, for example, I don't know that one would, because you'd have to add additional units to the overall facility for them to be considered new, newly constructed. So that second section B is intended to clearly identify which units are not considered newly constructed or just merely replacement units. The other thing that I wanted to point out to you is on page four, I received a call from the executive director of MHP, Montgomery Housing Partnership, and he has asked that the council consider not limiting rent increases for exempt rental facilities for vacant units. So if you have...
You mean the one a year.
You mean the amount or the timing?
The amount, or the timing. So for example, if you have Unit A that's occupied by a tenant, and that tenant remains in place over more than a 12-month period, they would be limited to one rent increase during that 12-month period. But if that unit was vacated during that 12-month period, that they could have subsequent rent increases. This particular language does not necessarily limit it to only occupied units, it applies as a blanket for occupied and unoccupied units. So if the unit was occupied on April 1st, for example, and they, for some reason or another, they vacated on August 1st, he's asking permission or the, the council consider revising the ordinance to allow him to increase the rent again on August 1st, even though it may have been increased on when the tenant initially moved in in April.
The way it was explained to me was that they have, for example, in 641 Houston, they're going to put in place agreements with existing tenants to shield them, basically, from the bulk of the rent increases that are coming onboard because of the renovations, so they're not going to take what they could take on those, on those folks. But if somebody moves out during the one-year period, they'd like to be able to recapture them like they'd be able to do normally, and this was a way of minimizing the impact on the folks who are there right now.
Correct.
But they would still be under the same overall ceilings that we had talked about?
They don't change the ceilings or anything else, it just lets them, in the event that an occupied, a currently occupied unit becomes vacant, it lets them take it up.
They can take it to the rent stabilization ceiling, even if it's been less than 12 months since their last renting.
Well, it would be the rent stabilization ceiling if it's an exempt property. It would be whatever the rent limit is that's established in that regulatory agreement.
By the agreement with the, yes, okay. All right. Is that...
But again, it would, if you were to make this revision, it's proposed as only, only limiting the 12-month rent increases to occupied units or exempt properties.
Okay, yeah, I understand what that means. Okay. Yes.
A question, something that just came up in my mind, on the newly constructed rental units. What would happen under this if a tornado came through and wiped out a building?
If they rebuilt it exactly as it was before, they didn't change the footprint, they didn't add any new units to it, they would be, they would be subject to the same rent limits that were before. They could apply for any capital improvement increases.
So the, the potential additional cost of building a... So the, the potential additional cost of building a new building where they had an old building minus the insurance coverage would be seen as a capital improvement?
Correct. Though if that were to come up, I'm sure someone would approach the city council about changes to the ordinance.
Let's hope.
Under this scenario.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking fire.
Correct.
A tornado, you know, any number of things that could basically cause one to say, okay, we start over.
Correct. If they, they really did start over and do a totally new facility that was larger than they could.
Different.
Then it would, if it was larger with additional units, then the added units would be exempt.
Right.
If they were to do a, a new facility with the same footprint, but they decided to have larger and fewer units, then the rents would be reduced accordingly. And that's.
Larger unit?
Larger, fewer units.
If you had.
You meant if you made smaller.
If you had 12. Correct, I've got it backwards. So if you had large units, you made them smaller, the rents would be reduced accordingly.
And if you had less units and made them larger, the rents would be increased?
No, because you've gone, you'd have a loss of rental units, so the units would be the same. The new, I know.
Like, like that's going to happen.
Okay, Terry.
Maybe someone can refresh my memory on why newly constructed units should be exempted?
The original thought was that that five-year period, they would not be exempt for an extended period of time. It would be just a five-year exemption, and that would give them an opportunity to sort of shake out the bugs, if you will, in terms of their operating costs, to see if the rents that they were charging were appropriate, given the costs associated with that facility. And five years is a period of time which shows up in other ordinances in other communities.
Thank you.
Any other council questions?
I'm going to.
You moved the ordinance, and who seconded it?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah, we're heading there.
Go ahead. Do you have another comment?
Just, I'll just say it now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this, but every time we get into this stuff, I'm appalled by the complexity and the ways in which answers to things that come up seemingly don't make sense. And so it's, it's with reluctance that I do it, because it just keeps going back to my original premise of, this is ridiculous.
Just, just as a point of clarification, your question regarding larger but fewer units, it was established that way in, in an effort to address some concerns about people acquiring smaller rental facilities, tearing them down, and then building much larger facilities without having the limitations of rent stabilization.
Yes.
Frankly, we hadn't thought about fires, but we had thought about.
And as we think about those, we go, gee, I'm not so sure what we've got, thanks. We could revise them.
Yeah, we, let me just say two things. There, there is a tension, and there always is with any program, between simplicity and covering all possible contingencies. The simpler it is, the more difficult it's going to be to cover every possible contingency. I guarantee you, if you have, if you have a section in the ordinance that covers everything that could possibly happen, no one on this earth would be able to understand that piece of legislation.
I agree, which is, which is why I hate to go in the direction of legislation.
Well, well, I think what we're doing here is we're trying to keep it simpler, but cover certain readily foreseeable contingencies. And that's true, it makes it more complicated than if we had a single ordinance that just said, this is the way it goes, and there's, you know, you can add to your, to your units, you can do anything you want, but we're not going to change that. You know, everybody, everybody has a rent ceiling of X. That would be the simplest law of all. We don't care how big your unit is, we don't care how long it's been around, we don't care how big the, you know, and you just, nobody gets to go above X. That would be the simplest thing, but it'd be grossly unfair. So if you get beyond that, it's going to get more complicated, but it's going to better fit individual situations. So believe me, I have seen laws that are more complicated than this. And I agree with you, I think we want to keep it simpler rather than less simple, but I have been convinced that going, an exemption for newly created units makes sense, and if you do that, you have to say what a newly created unit is and how it relates to a old unit that may have sat there. We could say nothing for newly created units, that'd be simpler yet, but there's downside to doing that. Anyway, are there any public comments on this ordinance?
Mark Hessel, speaking again. Looking at the drafting of this, I, I agree with what Councilmember Williams was saying. One of the terms that struck me was this phrase in 6.20.02282, regulatory agreement. It's not defined, I don't think, anywhere, and I think the city's going to get in a lot of trouble if I get to use that, because it covers things, as it's worded, that I don't think the council really has thought about. In addition to that, this business about the newly created units, if my building gets burned down, an eight-unit building, I'm going to probably build maybe eight small efficiency apartments, and then the next four units that I build, all in the same floor plan, all in the same footprint, are going to be market rate. Because you really, this whole replacement unit concept is based on the theory that there's a direct correlation between a unit that existed before and a specific unit built afterwards. There isn't. I mean, I could take a building of one and two-unit apartments and build a different number, a higher number of very small efficiencies. You can't have every one of, let's say, my new dozen efficiency units correspond to an existing old one. That means some of them are going to be at market rates, which I don't think is quite what the council had in mind. When you try to actually get down on your hands and knees and implement this on the ground, it's going to be as much of a can of worms as anything else. I think, you know, if I had seen Sarah in the back of the room, I probably would have gone to talk to her about it beforehand. It's not that she and the other staff working on this aren't intelligent, it's that it's next to impossible to do this in a way that makes sense, and with all deference to the mayor, the only way to do this, I think, is to have a very long statute that does allow a lot of things, because you can actually get simplicity if you have clarity. But where you just try to do it quickly and, quick and dirty, frankly, without really considering this one-on-one correspondence concept, you're going to have a mess.
Well, under the, under the example that you stated, if you tried to rebuild your building with the same amount of square footage, only to make some of the units smaller and some of the units larger, your larger units would be restricted to the ceilings of your smaller units and your smaller, of the units that you had had previously, and your smaller units would be restricted to lower ceilings. So that would really be a bad idea.
If you have 12 units where there were eight, only the first eight of the new units could possibly correspond to the old units. The other four don't correspond to anything.
If, if you do it within the same square footage that you had before, in other words, you try and get more units in by making some of the units smaller, you're gonna, you're not going to give yourself an advantage, because your bigger units would still correspond to the old ceilings, and your smaller units would correspond to newer, smaller ceilings.
I.
That's what it says.
I, it absolutely does not say that, because how do you determine whether Unit Number Nine, which is one of the new nine units, new units, corresponds to which of the older units?
No, that's not the concept behind it, and, and, you know, you might want to sit down and discuss this with our attorney. I'm not sure whether you're trying to make yourself a case for something you might want to do in the future, but the best advice I could give you, sit down with the attorney. I understand what they're trying to do, and it isn't what you just said, so.
Yeah, well.
Why don't you, why don't you talk to our attorney more about that?
I'd be glad to, but I have a feeling that in about two minutes, this is going to be a fait accompli, and I'm really here because I'm giving you a fair warning. This is not written clearly enough. I know what you think it means, I know that that's not what it seems to say on its face, and you really ought to get this thing properly analyzed in depth with a lot of back and forth from people of different perspectives who will look at this and have something completely different in mind. Just as staff said, well, we had in mind people tearing down a building or gutting a building to build a new one, they weren't even thinking about the fire situation. You need to, to properly draft something that's this involved and involves this much of a complex situation, you've got to have people with different mindsets looking down, sitting down and looking at the same language to read it from different angles. You haven't done it, and I'm just suggesting that if you do have people sit down and do that, you'll end up with a better statute.
I, I'm not, I'm not going to say that I disagree with what you said, but we haven't had any multifamily houses burned down any time I've been here, and I don't exactly expect a rash of them burning down tomorrow in response to this ordinance. And were there a rash of sudden buildings.
Police here already.
Burning down, then I would think, then the, then the acting police chief is notified, and I would think there was another problem going on. So I think, should something burn down in the next year or two, and we're confounded by it, then we'll deal with it. But I don't disagree that, you know, if somebody wants to offer further language that clarifies that, I'd be more than happy to, to look at it.
And I think my, my impression is that there's not a lot of open land available for new construction either.
No.
So I'm really not sure how much impact this whole section has.
Right, that's probably true.
But if, you know, one of my aggressive clients says, I've got an idea, and they start taking apart a building and rebuilding it and adding units, you're going to have a hard time defending this if you don't get to it first, because with the pressure of rent control, landlords are looking for condo conversions and everything else they can. In fact, I don't know why if my place burned down, why I wouldn't just rebuild it as condos. Why wouldn't I possibly put money into rebuilding it if I can't get money out of it?
Is there anyone else would like to make a comment? Yes.
My name is Barry Wirtle. I am president of Vista Management Company. We are managing agents for private investors of apartments in the Tacoma Park jurisdiction. I assume that this second reading deals with the issues of exempt properties from the rent stabilization law that's going to be presented and voted on. I see nothing in here about the vacancy decontrol, so I assume that the vacancy decontrol issue somehow is no longer an issue, that the council is not going to allow for vacancy decontrol. So now it's addressing which properties are exempt from the rent stabilization law that's going to be passed. One of them is, and that's what I want to address tonight, is the individual rental unit. Let me be sure I understand what you're saying. Private investor has no contract with any government agency, has a unit on the market that may or may not be rented to a Section 8 renter. That unit, if it's rented to a Section 8 resident, becomes exempt from the rent stabilizac, rent stabilization law. So that's what you're saying here? Okay. Now, that unit then is subject to the contract terms and conditions that were entered into between the landlord and the housing agency that the Section 8 or subsidized resident came from. If in that period of time, whether it's a year or two years or any other time, that unit becomes vacant through the voluntary exit, exit from that unit by that resident, or that landlord has served an eviction on that resident for non-payment, then that unit will then have a new rent assigned to it based on a base rent for the training future rent increases. I guess the base rent is established and clarified in the Act itself, the Rent Stabilization Act, so there's no.
The previous rent.
No, it was, it was whatever the previous rent was prior to it going under Section 8, and then the increases, whatever the annual increases are, whatever its old ceiling was, just with the increases would continue through as a new ceiling.
Okay, okay, so that's.
Sarah, what were you going to say?
I was just going to say the language regarding rents upon termination of exemption can be found on page four of the ordinance under C1.
I think, I think that's what he was reading.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have that, and that's a lot of words. I'm not quite sure I can understand it, but it's a lot of words saying what you said, Mayor. The ordinance, if approved, goes into effect October 1. Are you talking about the rent increase effective one whose notice is sent out to that resident 60 days in advance, which gives them all of August and all September for the 1st of October rent increase, or the letter that is sent out giving them 60 days notice must not be sent out before October 1? I don't, I don't know what effective date October 1 means. We run into this in other jurisdictions. If the letter is sent out at the end of July, giving them all of August and all of September for a 1st of October rent increase, and that's okay, because the ordinance went into effect October 1, giving that resident a increase, that's one thing. But if the law says effective October 1, meaning that you then have to send out the 60 days notice no sooner than October 1, then the increase would not take place until December 1, right?
So are you talking about a unit that's exempt because it has a Section 8 tenant in it?
Correct.
So your question is, the Section 8 tenant is in it when now?
Is, what, Mayor?
The Section 8 tenant is, is in the unit now?
Yes.
Okay. And so your question is, I'm not sure what your question is, because right now, they would fall, the, under the ordinance that is, as it exists right now, they would not be exempt.
That's correct.
So they would be under the, the rent control ordinance?
So I would give them a 60 days notice effective October 1, I'd go out the end of July.
A 60 days notice for what?
A rent increase.
Okay, you, you want to do, but you're not, you cannot do more than a one a rent increase every 12 months.
Got that. Their anniversary date is October 1 of every year.
Okay.
Right. Now, this thing says, if approved, the ordinance would become effective October 1.
Right.
I'm trying to understand the definition of October 1, the effective date. If I, am I still permitted to give that notice in July for October 1 effective date? Or must the letter now be sent out under the new law, October 1, giving them 60 days notice, hence, which would mean the increase would be December 1?
There's, there's nothing in the law that affects the date of the notice. It just, it just says that the, you can't raise rents more than once every 12 months, which is under the current law also, so that doesn't change it.
Okay, so the notice doesn't constitute a raising of the rent. It's the actual rent increase that takes place on a certain date.
Maybe you understand the question better, Sarah.
There are a couple of things I need to clarify. The adoption of this ordinance, which will go into effect October 1st, is not an automatic blanket exemption for anyone with a Section 8 or a housing choice voucher contract.
Right.
The October 1st effective date means that a landlord who feels that they fall within any of these exemptions may make an application to the department for the exemption. The exemptions will be approved on a case-by-case basis, assuming the review criteria being that they fall, that they fall within these exemptions.
So are you saying that when I turn to page three of this white document, ordinance number 2006-31, under Section 6.20.022, the department show upon application of the owner, are you saying that the owner, i.e. the me, have to make application with Tacoma Park's agency to what, exempt this, this unit, and then follow, I, I have to make an application, not the resident?
Yes, yes.
The landlord does?
Yes.
Whoa. Okay, I was wondering what that meant. So the application is, so these forms are going to be available?
They'll be, they'll be available October 1st.
Oh, wait a minute, I want to send out the notice in, in July, in another month. So do I, don't need a form then?
You could, you could send out a, you could send out a letter under the old law, but that would probably be a silly thing to do. If I were you, I would wait and make an application under the new law.
Well, Mayor.
I mean, but you're welcome to do it under the old law if you want to.
Wait for the applications to be ready, then I'm not going to be able to increase that rent in from the anniversary date October 1, am I? You're going to have to give 60 days notice.
I see his point. You're basically saying that if your anniversary date is October or November, then when, whether you can put out your notice now affects whether you can take a rent increase on somebody who's, who's anniversary is October, November.
And you lose two months of interest.
We've, this is not rocket science.
Aren't all Section 8 contracts on a yearly lease, and therefore they wouldn't be able to change the payment until the yearly lease came up? And I would assume that the yearly lease would correspond.
Every landlord has, if they take Section 8 housing, has anniversary dates that-
Sir, I understand your point, and I, and I, and I think that this is something that we can deal with by regulation. I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a underlying problem with the law.
I've seen in some cases where people, landlords, give a notice to the tenant that says, "If the such-and-such law passes, then you will expect such-and-such a rent increase at such time."
No, no, no.
And the other thing that I wanted to say-
It will already pass by then, so.
Right. The other thing I wanted to say is that this doesn't have an effect on the, on the tenant, because they're paying a third of their, of their tenancy.
Right.
There's no, there's no impact on the tenant.
So why don't we just interpret it, so it's not subject to anything, that you can do this for October and November?
Exactly. No impact on the tenant, so I don't think we should have-
If I have to make the application to increase a Section 8 rent 1st of November, I mean 1st of October, that application has to be available to me, given to the proper authorities, given back to me, so I can send this letter out no later than 30 days effective, July 31, giving them 60 days' notice effective October 1, the rent's going to go up per the contract, because they've got an increase in October of '05. What's so difficult to understand?
But, as I said, I think, I think you can work this out with the Housing Department. This is in the, this is in the area of-
They're going to have it ready. You make the laws, we have to act.
This is in the area of regulations, and I think that we, you know, we can give the Housing Department directions to work with you to get, if you need to get something out earlier than that. But there's nothing in the law that precludes that. So maybe we can just-
Okay, okay. All right, okay.
I would just like to make it clear that a property owner, a landlord, should not assume automatically that they will get an exemption because they, by reading this, that they feel that they qualify for it.
That's a very good point.
They need to submit an application, and it needs to be approved.
Can, can you get them the forms to submit the applications right after the law passes?
Let's assume that the landlord does not get the exemption. Do you think the landlord cares? Do you think the landlord wants the exemption? If he doesn't get the exemption, that means that that unit is not exempt from the Rent Stabilization Act, correct?
Right.
And therefore, he must follow whatever the Act says for those that, units that are not exempt, right?
Right.
Is it possible that he could get a higher rent increase from the non-exempt units? Is it possible?
I don't, I don't see how.
You don't see how? I don't know. I'm just asking a question. So he's going to get a higher rent increase from the exempt unit?
Not necessarily. I mean, it just depends, no, I can't predict.
If he doesn't, and he gets a higher rent from a non-exempt unit, why do you think he's going to make application? The heck's he care?
Might I suggest that a number of these issues are issues in the area of regulations. I think what we're passing is a law that sets out the framework for this program. And I understand your point about wanting some advanced notice. And my suggestion would be that you work with our Housing Department. I would certainly be in favor of them getting the applications for the exemption as early as they can, and working with the property owners to allow them to make application for the exemptions, if, if you would like an application for an exemption. And then if you qualify for the exemption, then you can go ahead and proceed under that program. That's, that's all I can tell you right now. The law doesn't get into this level of detail, and I don't think it should.
Putting the cart before the horse. Okay. A tenant moves out, a tenant that moves out, any tenant moves out. I want to rent the apartment to a housing, HOC resident. What am I going to put in this lease?
That would be-
As to, as to the rent, and, not to the rent, but not to the issues of rent increases down the road?
Shouldn't matter. I'm not sure what the question is.
The, the current con, or the current lease that the Housing Office makes available to landlords includes specific language regarding the rent stabilization ordinance, which indicates that rents are basically limited to the annual increase allowance, that there is an anniversary date, that they can't increase more than 12 months, and that they're-
Okay, so what's, what's going to be available for those-
That will be part, that will be part of the, the materials that we will be preparing for property owners such as yourself.
So come October 1, these new, this new lease format that deals with issues is going to be available?
Yes.
So if I rent an apartment prior to October 1, I'm to use the, the lease format that's now acceptable?
Yes.
But I'm going to modify it because it now extends beyond October 1. So I'm going to come to you and ask you how to modify it?
Yes, please do that.
Okay. All right. Be sure I get your name and address and where you are. All I know is Linda Burke. She's still with the organization?
I'm sorry, who?
Linda Walker is still with her office.
I mean Linda Walker, right, okay.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Okay. This issue of rent stabilization started some times, weeks ago, and we couldn't attend all the meetings. Last time you were saying you would be formulating this law with the staff. The staff would prepare, and I see here now what I, I couldn't get the tape of the meetings either to borrow. Here, what I see, what I read, is not very clear. It's confusing. Now, I have three questions first. Is there another reading left?
No, this is the second reading of the ordinance.
And the last?
Yes, it's the last reading.
Number two. Number two is, the Montgomery Housing Partnership, which has scattered sites where I rent, what do they come under? I don't see anything here clearly.
What's the question?
Will they be exempt?
Montgomery Housing Partnership?
Yes, they are not-for-profit organization which gets cheap loans from the county and tax exemption. So are they exempt from rent stabilization, yes or no?
I believe in most cases that they do have an agreement with the, am I right? In most cases, they do have an agreement with the local government which would put them in the exempt.
How do we know? I have no idea. I don't see, we don't have much time to dig things. For example, we work all day. I have the housing code, I think, and I will look to it tonight and see what you change in this.
I think, I think your primary interest is in the, is within the units in the Edinburgh House, right?
Yeah.
If I understand the financing correctly that was used to develop the Edinburgh House, that property would be exempt from rent stabilization rent limits, assuming the property owner made application and was found eligible.
I don't hear you. It's your last question.
She said, she said that we're assuming, based on what we know about their financing, that they probably are exempt because they do have an agreement with the entity that provided the financing that would limit rents.
What do you mean by exempt? Since they have no tax payment, they are tax exempt, they are not-for-profit, how could they be exempt from stabilization of rent? This is contradictory, what you're saying.
No, they're, because they, they have other ways of limiting rents, because they have an agreement with-
Okay.
The entity that they get the financing from.
We need to know how we get that, to know our rights. I don't know. For what concerns me, I already, I was already given rent increase July, June 1, and they said, "This is the amount you will pay for one year." What's going to happen after that, I have to know.
Nothing changes till next June 1.
No, but I, I need to know what-
Nothing changed till next June 1, and, and they won't, and you'll have to talk with them.
No, my question is not that. My question is, we need to know the agreements they have, how it is. The housing, could they tell us, give us a copy of something?
Once that information is submitted, it becomes public information, and we'd be more than glad to share the documents and the application with the tenants.
What do you mean? We're not talking about this change of the law stabilization. I mean that-
Right, I think there's two things that I, that I hear, two, two questions. One is, what limits are there on rent increases right now within the, you know, for the tenants of the Edinburgh? And then number two, will this law change those limits in any way? And if so, how?
The rents currently at the Edinburgh are very, the rent limits are similar to any other rental property in Tacoma Park. It's limited to the annual rent increase allowance, which this year is 2.1%.
Yes.
The rents are also limited in the sense that they can only increase once in any 12-month period.
Yes.
Now, the adoption of this particular ordinance will not permit the property owner to increase the rent more frequently than once every 12 months. So the rents that were increased effective July 1 of this year could not increase until July 1 of 2007.
But that's another question I have.
Okay, but then, but then the next question is?
The, the amount of the rent increase is difficult to give you a flat percentage, because it's, it will vary from property to property, the size of the unit, and the type of agreement that the property owner has entered into.
Okay, what I hear you saying, though, is that with, if we pass this law, then Tacoma Park will no longer regulate the, the amount of the increase.
Right. The rents are structured because of the financing for, or, buildings such as the Edinburgh to be affordable for a specific income group.
But they have to make application.
And they have to make application.
They have to make application in order to be exempt from rent stabilization. And in the application, presumably, they would have to document that they are subject to a regulatory agreement with a governmental agency. And we would be willing to make that agreement public, and so you could get access to it.
Okay, so then that raises the question, if they make that application, do we automatically, with this law, then do we automatically accept that application? Or do we have, or do we have judgment over the fact that we do not want to accept their application? We deny their request?
You would be allowed to, the only, under the, the only scenario in which you could deny an application was if it was an agreement that did not fall within the parameters of the ordinance, it did not stipulate what the maximum rent limits were going to be, and what the maximum ceiling rents were for the targeted population, or that it was a bogus entity.
Right.
Or that it was available to people other than low and moderate income tenants. Right?
But how do we know?
There may be mixed income, some of these buildings are mixed income. There are some market rents-
We are mixed.
... great rents, and some individuals that live in the buildings that exceed the income limits.
Now, could you, could you be louder a little bit? We don't hear you, what you're saying.
Yeah, but I, I think that the gist, the gist of the answer to your question is that nothing changes in your unit until next year in July.
That's, that's not my question, ma'am.
And then, and, and between now and next July, the, the building owners would have to make application to the city if they wanted to be exempt. In that application, they would have to specify what their agreement was in terms of the limitations on rent levels.
Okay, my question is not that. We want to need to planify and know where we stand. We want to know that agreement, a copy of that agreement.
Yes, if, if, it would need to be provided to us in order to justify that exemption, and that we would be happy to provide it to the tenants.
You don't have any means that your housing division not check for those agreements?
We don't, they haven't submitted, well, they haven't submitted an agreement subsequent to this because they haven't asked for an exemption. We won't see it until they, until they ask for an exemption.
Who was telling me that they, they, they got a tax credit from the city? How is that?
That's different.
And they had also one from the county?
That's different.
What is different? Why?
Because that's, that is their tax status, which is different than, than a rent, than a rental agreement. It's two different things. They're going to come and give us what their agreement is, they'll tell us what their rent caps are going to be, and you will get to see that. They don't get, they don't get this exemption from stabilization until they've shown us what their agreement, what their agreement is, and that they have an agreement. If we have that, you will get that.
I think the key thing is that, that organizations such as Montgomery County Housing Partnership exist to provide housing for low-income residents of the county, and so it would be counterintuitive to say that they're going to raise rents excessively. You know, their very existence is to provide housing for low-income residents.
No, they provide for mixed economy, affordable housing, and I have, if I go back and read my rent, my rental contract last year, there is a clause saying, "If your income increases, we will proportionally increase your rent, regardless of the rent stabilization of the city."
Right.
And they formulate a percentage, for example, hundreds, more than 140% your salary increases, you change a job, or you are, got a raise, you will pay. I accepted that if I got one, but there is none this year. So I want to know what is.
So the, the answer is, they, they can also reduce your rent if your income goes down?
It's not going to, your status is-
I'm not sure.
It's not going to change much from where you are right now, because if they have that flexibility according to your income, they're just going to retain that flexibility with your income. I mean, their, their rents are tied to people's income levels.
Is that any way we know the agreements with the government, with the county? I have to go by myself, I'm dig-
We would be happy to talk to you after the meeting, maybe, and we can clarify it a little bit better for you.
I'm afraid I can't wait.
I think that might be helpful. I'm not sure that this is the best forum to sort of go over your situation.
Yeah, but share my situation alone, community situation.
I, I understand what you're saying.
And the laws you institute here, you do it fast, fast, and nobody has enough time to study.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So why is that?
And I would be happy, I'm, I'm happy and I-
How about the tenants?
I, I would be happy, and I, I think there would be other people who would be happy to, to talk to you some more about it, but-
We have rights. We are, we live here for years.
It's difficult to do it in this type of a forum. Thank, thank you, appreciate your input.
This is stifling. This is what I see, madam, here.
Okay.
This is not right. Give us time and don't, don't vote on this thing, we will protest.
Okay.
Give some more time, a week too, so that we can study and planify everything and see everything together.
Okay.
Because there's no big people here, I see, who talk to you.
Thank, but I, I understand what you're saying.
No, that's not right.
I, I thank you, I understand what you're saying.
I'd like to move the tables for a week so that we can get the information from the Montgomery Housing Partnership.
It's not going to get, we're not going to get any different information in a week than we have already. I don't, I don't know what basis we have to get that information from them right now, because they're not, they haven't made an application. I think we should just go ahead and, and do it.
I'm worried we're going to do it. I don't think it's going to change anything.
It's not going to change.
Okay. Do you want your motion to be?
We didn't have a second.
Don't have to.
Well, who spoke that was the second?
Okay.
Speaking is a second.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue?
I just got one suggestion. If they could just table the vote until they can, so people can get a chance to maybe study this, and maybe if there's any language barriers or anything involved in this, they could research and then just table this maybe for a week or two, and then they can have a chance to, to get all these little details ironed up, because these little details are later on going to turn out to be really big details, and we don't want to have any future situations where people's rights are violated. I think we should try to table this for at least a week or two, and give everybody a chance to study the ordinance, and study any details or any modifications you want to make in it. Thank you. My name's Mr. Lovelace, by the way.
Pat, I've been working with tenants in other buildings who want this law passed. There are people who are waiting for this law to get done, so that their buildings can be purchased, and if this, if these buildings are not purchased and this law is not passed, those buildings are going to go into private hands, and tenants' units are going to be lost. There's a certain degree of urgency in this, and I wouldn't be doing this if I thought this was going to lead to major rent increases. This is about letting the nonprofits continue to operate in the city, and to get them to be more active in the city, and to be able to buy more units in the city, which is the only way we're going to be able to provide and preserve any affordable housing in the city.
See, we don't want people's rents to go way up either.
I, I think that-
No, we don't.
I, I think that there's some confusion about this. I don't think that it's, it's a question of there being a problem with the law.
See, we don't want people's rents to go way up either.
I, I think that...
No, we don't.
I, I think that there's some confusion about this. I don't think that it's, it's a question of there being a problem with the law. I think it's being, it's more a problem of the, the comprehension of the, of what's in the, in the law. And I'm, I'm comfortable that I think it's fair, it's not going to lead to rent increases. What it will do is what Mark said, which is that it will enable, we only have one more meeting before we go into recess, we need to get this done before then. And if we're going to keep the nonprofits active in the city and preserving affordable housing, we need to pass this law. And so that's the urgency for it. So, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Is there any additional council comments on this ordinance? All right. What were you...
I realize that there's a motion on, on...
Yes.
Does that include the requested revision regarding the 12-month?
Yes.
You didn't...
I moved it with that in mind, yes.
Okay, all right. And the second was, I don't remember what the second was, but let's assume that they were just doing the same thing. All right, if there's no additional council comments, since this is the second reading of the ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane, Councilmember Barry, Councilmember Clay, Council, Councilmember Elrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
I've disgruntled, aye.
All right. The ordinance passes, and I, as I said, I would be happy to speak with you more about the impact of this after the meeting if you'd like. The next item on the agenda is a single reading ordinance authorizing funds for a supplement of the state homeowners' property tax credit program. Wayne, did you want to give us a briefing on this?
Yes, and the, the council in September '05 approved raising the homeowners' tax credit, the local supplement, from 30% to 50% of the state homeowners' property tax credit. At that time, we, based on what we knew, we, there was $50,000 in the budget, and we felt that was sufficient. When the bill came in in June, it was very much higher, and we started doing research. And what we found was that the state had also increased their formulas for homeowners' tax credits. So when we took the, the 50% of what they got from the state, the bill at this year for '06 is actually $103,210, or $53,000 more. There is sufficient funds in the '06 9,000 account where we paid this from to cover that, and we're asking the council to approve that.
And I would say that this is actually good news. One of the concerns that we had at the time that we budgeted for our homeowners' property tax credit program was that the limits on the program were so strict that many people who were legitimately needy were not going to qualify for a very big rebate. But the way the state has changed the program, they have made it much more possible for low-income homeowners to qualify. And so the reason that it's costing more is because many of the homeowners who are low-income qualify for more of a rebate this year than they did in past years, because, for example, the limit on the property value has gone from, I think it's 150...
150 to 300.
300,000. So rather than only getting a rebate on the first $150,000 of, of property value, they can get it on $300, $300,000 of property value. So this is actually going in the direction that the council wanted to see, and the additional money that's being spent on this program is providing additional property tax relief to the people who need it the most. So I'm, I'm not happy to see things going over budget, but I'm very happy to see that the state has changed the program in the ways that we were hoping they would, so that more people who are really needy and need additional property tax rebates can get them under both the state program and the city's program.
This takes care of the '06 issue.
I understand.
We'll have to come back to you, probably involve, and amend the '07 budget.
Right.
To provide some additional funds.
Three quick comments. An additional thing that the state did that I think was good was they also exempted basically pension income, which makes, makes it easier for people to qualify. And Wayne, you just got at a point that I wanted to be sure I understood. When we passed the, when we increased the tax credit in September, was that targeting the '06 budget number or the '07 budget number?
It was the '06.
Okay. So that, so that, what? Okay, that's what I wanted to make, be clear on, because I was thinking it was probably aimed at '07. And then finally, in the notice that's copied at the back of the packet for the Montgomery County Property Tax Break, it mentions in addition to the state and the county, there are also credits available for residents in the City of Rockville and City of Gakersburg. They're also administered by the state. Is there a difference between our program and the Rockville and Gakersburg programs such that that's included here, or is that just an oversight that they didn't list ours?
I'm not a totally certain, but I believe that the county administers their program, and we elected to do our own.
And what, do you recall the reason that we elected to do our own rather than have the county administer it?
I can't answer that.
And, and I'm wondering whether there would be some efficiencies to having the county administer it?
The reason we're doing our own is ours preceded the county's program.
Okay, and now, maybe...
And the county's program came in afterwards.
And now maybe it would be a good idea to have the county administer it?
Well, we, actually, we had looked at that, and I think it's worth looking at again, but that's the reason.
I agree with Bruce. We should look at it.
Yes, let's look at it. The other thing that I would suggest, since I noticed that mostly the increase is increased payments to the same people rather than increase the number of people, that I think we should do more publicity about the availability of the states and our program for the '07 credit. Because I, my guess would be with the, with the expanded limits, more people would become eligible, or more people would choose to apply because they'd get more than a few dollars. And so it would be very useful. This is one of the goals that the council really was trying to accomplish, which was to provide additional property tax relief to the most needy homeowners. And I think we should advertise the availability of this and see if we can get more people to apply.
We can do that.
Would someone like to move this ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council comments on the ordinance? Is there any additional public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane, Councilmember Barry, Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Elrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance, the single reading ordinance passes. The last item on our special session agenda is a ordinance authorizing the lease purchase of six police vehicles.
This is a follow-on to our program on the take-home car program and to bring the fleet up to date. It's, it was approved in the budget for '07, and the funds are in there. And so we're asking approval to purchase the six for the, the annual, the FY '07 cost would be $47,572.
Like to move it?
Sure. Okay. My understanding, when we discussed this earlier, is the purpose of the lease purchase is to spread the cost over the entire period, rather than, since we're expanding the number of cars in the fleet, rather than having to hit all at once to, to spread the cost over the life of the cars.
That's correct.
Terry?
Thank you. I'm glad to see we're moving forward with this so rapidly, after the, right on the heels of the approval of the nine cars in the FY '06 budget. I wonder if you've given any thought, since we are basically replacing the entire fleet now with the, the last purchase in this one, if you've given any thought to changing the, the color scheme of the vehicles? To, seems like the perfect time to, to do that at a pretty insignificant cost.
We haven't given any thought to, we're only changing about half the fleet right now, so...
You don't like the color scheme?
That would be some additional cost to us.
That's just if we're going to do it. This is a good time to do it, when we're getting, what, 15 new cars? Seems like the appropriate time to make the change.
What colors are you thinking of?
Don't even start, get me started.
I thought the latest, the latest logo sort of thing, color scheme, was the design of one of the officers, is it?
It was a, an in-house design by some of the officers. If you've got something in mind, I'd be glad to talk to you.
No, it's just been, it's been some time, and I know that, you know, as with your patch on your sleeve, you know, it's nice to, to upgrade and modernize things. I won't suggest what would be appropriate for Tacoma Park, but...
I was hoping to place these orders tomorrow, but I think that if...
Place them.
If someone's...
Yeah, it's, you know, at this point in time, it's your department, I guess...
I think people are very used to getting these cars with it.
I imagine they are.
Then I, I'd have another more serious question, and, and I don't know if it's really a question for you as it is, much as it is for the city manager, and that is, I've been very concerned, I think we, this council's pretty generous with the police department. I think, you know, our police department is pretty well-funded, but I've been very concerned over the past few months that officers seem to have trouble finding vehicles that work so they can do their patrol. In fact, we left here one night a couple weeks ago, and there was a, a police car driving down Maple Avenue on a flat tire, and I asked why they're riding on a flat tire, and he said, "Well, that was the, that was the spare. The, the other tire had gone flat earlier." And I said, "Well, that's kind of bizarre." And they said, "No, that's common, and most of our spare tires are pretty bad shape." You know, that concerns me of, and I'd like to know why we're kind of running on the edge of not having vehicles, quality vehicles, available for the officers to use.
I think the council's action in getting 15 new cars in the last couple months is a big step in improving the fleet. There were 15 cars needed.
Yeah, but I think the question for the city manager is, do we have an issue with our maintenance of these vehicles so that we don't get in this position again?
I think we shouldn't have to buy a new car in order to get better tires.
Well, I'm, I'm also conscious of the fact that most people, from what I understand, their, their spare is flat. I'm sure mine is.
But that's not, I mean, that may be the way we run our personal lives, but it's not sufficient for a police force.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that we should do that.
It's problematic.
I, I would agree that we should look into that. I'm not thinking that this is a reason for us not to authorize the lease purchase.
It's not a reason, but I think it's, it's also kind of ridiculous when, like I say, we have a well-funded police department and, and officers have to try to scrounge to find a vehicle to go out on patrol and...
There's, there's constant interaction between, you know, the police department and the public records department on the maintenance of the vehicles, but certainly we can take this up as an issue with, you know, as you point out, things like, something as simple as a spare tire were not available, and that's something we should be able to get corrected.
I appreciate it.
I was wondering whether you could, I, I know we've got a seven-year goal for replacing vehicles. Is there a mileage number that, that goes with that? In other words, if you exceed the mileage before seven years, is there some target that...
I think our, our hope is that with a take-home vehicle, with the usage of a take-home vehicle will get, that the mileage may be less important than it has been in the past.
What is it?
There are, there are fleets, the, the current is five years, 100,000 miles, and many times we go over that mileage. But there are fleets that are getting considerably better than 100,000 miles on a take-home Crown Victoria.
But you've got cars out there that are both older than five years and have more than 100,000 miles.
Yes, we have, yes.
Okay. And also just a, a comment to Terry, I had a conversation with officers in the Montgomery County Police Department, and they also talked about going into the station and having to wait around a couple of hours to find the car they could use. So we're not the only ones that are having problems with equipment and having the right number of vehicles out there.
Again, I, I go back to the thing that, you know, our community pays high taxes and expects good service, and we hear the problems hiring officers, but there are some things that are maybe easier to solve, and if it's making sure that they have the resources and equipment necessary to do the job, then it'd be us to take the steps necessary to make that happen.
All right. Is there any additional comments on the single reading ordinance in front of us? Is there any public comments on the ordinance? All right, since we say single reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane, Councilmember Barry, Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Elrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
All right.
The ordinance passes, the single reading ordinance passes. Thank you.
They'll be happy to.
The council's going to take a very short recess, and we will return for the items on our work session agenda.
We understand the addition of trellises are being considered to further soften the facade and that that planning is appreciated as well. Maintaining the campus grounds, including exterior sidewalk lighting as well as public safety presence on and around the campus. And finally, excellent ice cream socials. Concerns for future projects include making sure the college pursues expansion into land and buildings in South Silver Spring, looking at that area as opposed to the existing campus. That's already been accomplished on several fronts and we'd like to see that pursued. Maintaining an ongoing dialogue with the college at the beginning of projects as part of the college's implementation of its master plan process. How is the increased attendance predicted at the college addressed in terms of more or better public transportation and private vehicles? Maintaining the integrity of the existing neighborhood in terms of new or renovated building scale, density, elevation, architectural detail, equipment noise, access, pedestrian flow, landscaping, lighting, traffic, and parking. And again, this is a, an effort that we need to work with the college on. I think it's shown to be successful on several projects. We want to continue that. But I have several other people here, as I've mentioned earlier, Lorraine Pierceall, Francis Phipps, and possibly James Evans, to expand upon those comments. So I'll turn it over to Lorraine.
As Richard was saying, we really do appreciate having the dialogue with the college by this, through this committee. It's been a good vehicle to have conversations with them. If you boil it down, I think really what our concerns are is how we grow. It's all related to managing growth. And I can just take you back a little bit to the mid-'90s when the college almost left and we really did not want it to and we really worked very hard to have the college stay with us and we're very happy that they did. We, at that time, knew that they needed a large building, which is the student services building on the campus. And we wanted them and said, "Yes, we do understand. You need to have that." We talked a lot about expansion into South Silver Spring and we talked a lot about renovation of the campus. And something that we've kind of come to grips with, I think, is that renovation and expansion are two very different things. And right now, we're looking at the facility master plan, which is a very important document. It's the college's blueprint for the future. And its content is extremely, extremely important to us and to the college. It's the basis for funding and planning. And funding is secured way in advance on the basis of facility master plans, which are frequently updated. And funding is secured way out. So funding is secured out into FY '11 and FY '12 even as we speak for design money. And so the planning process moves forward. And right now, the master plan as it is currently conceived actually places all of the expansion, the future, foreseeable future expansion on the campus itself. And I think this is certainly understandable because it's a lot easier for the college to do that because it owns the land. But what is happening is we're realizing we're having a lot of questions about how that happens. And for example, the science service, the science building, Science North and South, is being conceived of as a larger building than even the existing building on campus, the student services building. And granted, it is on Fenton Street, but there, which is away from the community, but it is also still within our neighborhood and it changes the whole character and feeling of the campus. And so we're struggling with this now, quite honestly, and we're trying to find some solutions to how do we manage growth on the campus. And one of the overriding issues, really, ever since the mid-'90s when we grappled with this, was the need to secure property, commercial property on Fenton and Burlington, the natural places for the college to expand into so that all its future density does not be, is not always placed on the same small footprint that we have. And the campus itself right now is actually a very lovely campus when you look at it in terms of its scale and massing. It's very open and it has gorgeous old trees and it's, I think it's the prettiest campus of all. Your campuses are somewhat higher. So what we are right now struggling with is how do we, how do we get that vision for the future into a document like the master plan and actually into the forefront of the college's thinking? And this is something I think we've just recently realized that it's critical to move forward with dialogue at the executive vice president level at this point with the college. And I think it would be very helpful to talk about, have some discussions with them on vision. And, you know, when you get, it's kind of funny because when you think back to the mid-'90s, it was an impossibility in those days to many in the college to have the bridge over the tracks and to have a separate campus. And yet, it worked out beautifully. And so it all is a matter of vision and thinking really forward as to what do we want this campus to look like in the future? Do we want it to ultimately become an eight-story campus because if we don't, 40 years from now, what are we going to do? Or do we, should we start thinking about this right now while there's land available and it's not turned into condominiums and it still may be affordable? And if we don't start thinking of it now and planning out, it's not going to happen. And I think that that is one of our biggest concerns, that the expansion should still move into South Silver Spring to the extent, highest extent possible, although we would like to see renovation of the campus as well. So I think this is, this is kind of where we are right now. And our thought is, is if perhaps we could have some discussions with Bill Campbell, and I'm having a senior moment, I cannot remember the name of the second vice president, I apologize for that, but it would be great if we could, if we could do that. And Mayor Porter, if you could participate in something like that, I think it would be very helpful because as a visioning, kind of a serious visioning session, because the way we're going, the way the master plan is, there really isn't a provision to do that. The master plan is very meat and potatoes, nuts and bolts, and it fulfills, they have projections and they have a footprint and they match their projections for enrollment with the footprint that they have. But I think we need to move, find a way to move a little beyond that and start thinking about how we manage growth there on that little spot of land, which really is not very huge. So that, in a nutshell, is the issue. I think the major issue and all the other questions about traffic and all this stuff, well, it all really comes down from that major issue. How do we match growth?
If I could just ask you one very short follow-up question, Lorraine. I understand that they do have a master plan and you're talking about going beyond that master plan in terms of time? Is that what you mean?
Well, or somehow acknowledging, I guess my concern is that the master plan is very much a blueprint. And if it really isn't in the master plan, it's difficult sometimes. I mean, concept broad concepts, I'm afraid that it might not happen. And so I'd love to find a way in which we can, at some point, and the master plans are updated every five years, but somehow, I'd love to see a serious look at expansion into South Silver Spring, acquiring land. I would hate, I guess the concern is, we would hate to see the loss of property that the college would have, could potentially get. And if their funding sources don't see the need or the commitment to do this, it may not happen. And so that, I think, is the thinking for, because it is their blueprint, their basis for many things, I think it's important to have something in there somehow.
That acknowledges the need for looking beyond the current.
Yeah, and so we can get our legislative representatives to help us because we'd love to see the college healthy and thriving and having some of those commercial properties in the vicinity makes a lot of sense for them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm just going to add to what she said. The real issue is that the college projects growing enrollment. And...
And if it really isn't in the Master Plan, it's difficult sometimes. I mean, concept, broad concepts, I'm afraid that it might not happen. And so I'd love to find a way in which we can, at some point, and, and the Master Plans are updated every five years, but somehow, I'd love to see a serious look at expansion into South Silver Spring acquiring land. I would hate, I guess the concern is, we would hate to see the, the loss of property that the college would have, could potentially get. And if their funding sources don't see the need or the commitment to do this, it may not happen. And so that, I think, is the thinking for, because it is their blueprint, their basis for many things, I think it's important to have something in there somehow.
That acknowledges the need for looking beyond the current.
Yeah, and so we can get our legislative representatives to help us because we'd love to see the college healthy and thriving and having some of those commercial properties in the vicinity makes a lot of sense for them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm just going to add to what she said. The real issue is that the college projects growing enrollment. And what I find very positive is that the community immediately adjacent really wants the health and vitality of that institution. The problem is, what they're dealing with is a very small physical footprint for growth and expansion. It's really like trying to fit a size 16 in a size 12 dress. You know, it's just not going to work long-term. And it's kind of foolish to plan that it will work. And I think what the community I see very concerned about is mass, scale, density overwhelming that small area, Block 69 and the neighborhood in Lower Silver Spring, which has been very involved. And I think that there are only so many options you have for accommodating growth. And what Lorraine has made very clear is there is an opportunity now, at this stage of planning, and it's very prudent, to look for other locations in the adjacent neighborhood. There are structures there that are quite large, that are performing storage services. There are all parking structures up and down there. There are underused parcels in the area. And I guess the last thing is, and it's a question for the city to debate, and maybe this is the time to raise it, is who is going to determine how that segment of our city looks and functions in the future? Is it our residential community? Is it an institution? Or is it a blend? And right now, what we're finding in the meetings is that we have no way to really, at the level that they're being carried out, to influence looking at a broader horizon. And I'll just conclude by saying, people and institutions are judged not only by the choices they, what they want to do, but what they don't choose to do. And we think now is an opportune time to begin to choose to accommodate some of these concerns.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to recognize Alana Blanchard with the City Planning Department, who has been at every meeting and, and taking minutes, and that's appreciated. Are there any questions that you may have?
I guess you're really talking about this, looking at expansion where the storage structures are now. And around, and I assume, just that, that commercial corner from the bridge down toward the, toward the existing parking garage.
Right. And as you come, and also down Burlington, there are also some commercial structures, which would make a lot of sense for the college to ultimately think about.
And I'd just like to note, the college has been successful in purchasing property with the Health Sciences Building on Georgia Avenue and the, the new Art Center on the corner of Ethan Allen and Georgia, which is to be built, King Street Property.
I remember the discussion about what couldn't be done, and it turned out that, that things could be done.
Right. We just don't want to lose that window of opportunity to look at existing parcels in the area of South Silver Spring outside of the footprint.
So if they, they put capital into the budget for, for future expansion, or you, you mentioned a particular building, does that have a price tag already? Or a size?
It's not, it's not really.
I mean, what they, what they planned on doing, I mean, is this something that they've got, you know, five-year CIP? You talk about enlarging the building on Fenton, or replacing stuff on Long Fenton, that's in a five-year CIP now?
Maybe Dave can, can you answer?
Do you want to join us up here or join them up here?
Come on up.
Sure.
It sounds like some of these questions.
Answer that most correctly.
So my question is, do you have CIP projects that involve major expansion or construction?
Yes, sir. David Chap, Chief Facilities Officer for the college, thank you. If the question is, do we have a CIP that considers growth on the existing campus, that would be a true statement. Our CIP is six-year window. The Master Plan that you've all been talking about is a 10, 10-year look, and the Master Plan we finished was 2002 to 2012. So now we're ready for the five-year update of that, which will carry that to 2017. See, we have a rolling Master Plan, but it looks out for, for actual growth and space deficits of 10 years, and then land use at 20 years. Our CIP is six years. And in the six-year window, as you heard Ms. Pierceall mention, that the Science South is the first building on the existing campus. Currently, the Commons Building is under design for renovation, that's on the existing building, and that's underway for design.
And that, that's at the corner of Tacoma and New York Avenue?
Thank you, thank you. The next building, major building on the campus would be the Science South Building, and the design money for the renovation of that building is 2010. And so that's in the six-year CIP. And just to be very honest, when I say renovation, the Science South Building is in such deplorable condition from our deferred maintenance aspect and structural integrity of the building, that renovation is probably going to be, as we plan right now, demolition and rebuilding.
But when you rebuild, then you're not, but not at the current scale, but in a much different scale?
The Master Plan currently talks about a program that fits in a four-story building versus the existing three-story building. And that's just a program. That's not saying that the building's going to be 40, 50, 60, 70 feet tall. It fits a program in four stories on that building, which is on Fenton, Fenton Street.
Could, could a portion of that building be underground?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I try not to make promises this far in advance, but you know, if, when I've had conversations with the community, you know, I try not to offer things that I can't foresee, and also try not to hamstring the college. But things are possible, and if that four stories was something that was unacceptable as we went through the design process, we would try to mitigate that. One of the options of mitigation is to bring that level down to a street level by removing dirt and thus making it vis, not, I don't know that even four stories would be visible from New York Avenue, frankly, because it's on Fenton Street. But if that was an issue, we would hire a design team, and they would do sightlines and the depictions and concept drawings, and yeah, that's, yes, ma'am, that's a possibility.
And to the college's credit, working on the Student Services Building, the, the top floor was set back, there were bay windows, sort of detailing and elevation, some of the materials picked to create a scale there, landscaping. I think we worked together well. There was some back and forth, definitely, but I thought their design team was reasonable and that they listened to us, and that's the kind of partnership we want to continue in the future. Looking at all the land available in South Silver Spring beyond the footprint on the existing college.
Do you have land?
But then, excuse me?
I was wondering, if they have land acquisition plans?
No, sir, we don't. You know, that's, we're, our capital budget's 50% county fund, 50% state fund. And so when you try to acquire land, as was mentioned up here earlier, the college has done that along Fenton Street and Georgia Avenue. But as you all know, the stars aligned perfectly. We had a county council, a county executive that wanted to develop South Silver Spring, the college needed to grow. Everything worked wonderfully. The state was very interested in the developed diners, and all the stars aligned. I'm not saying all the stars put in line again, again in the future, but it takes an awful lot of political will to put that kind of money together to acquire land.
Terry, did you have a question?
Thank you. I think a lot of my questions have been answered already in response to Councilmember Elridge. But I was most interested in the, well, I guess two things. First, I'd like to thank the committee. I really appreciate the amount of work that you've put into, to the neighborhood and working with the college, and turned kind of an ugly situation into a nice collaborative situation. And that's to your credit. But I was, I'm curious about the, the long-term plan, because that's, that's really what you all are talking about, is looking out in the future so that you don't create problems, unexpected problems. You mentioned that the, your long-range plan, 10-year plan, is due for revision. Do you have a schedule for that?
We would be doing the RFP to hire the team to come in, we hope, this fall, and bring the team on board and then start the revisions to the Facilities Master Plan.
Okay, and I assume you're gonna, I assume you're gonna be involving the committee in that process?
The community, I would, we take their input. We, we already know what they want, so that's going to be portrayed to the design team. Could certainly bring the design team, or it's not a design team, I shouldn't say, that's a Facilities Master Planning team, down and hear from the committee, from their very mouth, and take that into consideration. I just can't make any promises in which direction they're going.
I know that the process the county uses in doing the Master Plan for the community is, you know, has a very strong community involvement in that process, and I would hope that the college would do the same.
To some degree. There's just a little bit difference between what you might be familiar with, with mandatory referral or the Master Plan that's done up there, or the Sector Plan. The Facilities Master Plan, which is a state requirement, is very much a data-driven Master Plan update. So we don't get to a level of detail that you might be seeing at a Master Plan that's done for the County Park and Planning Commission. But we don't talk about characteristics of buildings and such. We try to fit programs into the square footage that's called for by the tables that deal with our, that are reflective of our enrollment projections. Having said all that, we will certainly take into consideration all the issues that the community raised, we're very familiar with them. We don't want to build skyscrapers across Jim Evans's house. College is not interested in that at all.
And neither is Jim.
And neither is Jim. That's right, that's right. Which is why we, we pushed in the Master Plan that density and the height growth over on the Fenton Street.
Right.
That's an issue still, and we're still going to try to work on that.
And then I'm sure you're already doing this, but you know, any time that, that you think of opportunity for this council to, to help the college to, to kind of move into the South, South Silver Spring area, expand in that direction, I encourage you to, to let us know.
Yes, sir. I take that message back to the appropriate authorities.
I have had a discussion with the President of the College, Brad Stewart, about some of these same issues, and suggested to him that the college come and make a presentation to the council and to the community in the fall on where things currently stood. And he said that he would be happy to have them do that. And I think that might be a way to sort of begin the discussion. And the other thing is to say to Lorraine that I think, you know, I would be very happy to work with you and with the college. I think that the, the recent history, not the long-ago history, but the recent history of dealings between the city and Montgomery College has been very beneficial, I think, for both sides. And I'd very much like to see it continue that way. And if there's anything that I can do to facilitate that, I'd be very happy to do that. I, and I think that's very much in the city's interest, I think it's in the neighborhood's interest, I think it's in the college's interest. So if there is something that I or the council can do to help, you know, make that relationship work as smoothly as possible, you know, we would be very happy to do that. And I think one thing might be to have the college come and make a presentation at some point in the fall on where you stand currently. And that might be a way to sort of kick off whatever might be the appropriate follow-up on that, on that issue.
Yeah. I think this is the time, though, to find some really concrete answers and approaches to things now. I, I don't think it's a good idea to wait and see whether or not things can be done five years from now or 10 years out from now. I think we need to think about what can we do now on this vision thing to, to really have something concrete. And I appreciate everything Dave does. He's very much a straight shooter. But there, when you start to talk about something of this magnitude, this is something that has to go up the chain of command and just as the bridge did, just as the two campuses did. That vision, that opportunity to discuss that vision has to happen. And those things usually happen in smaller groups, but I really do think it's imperative that we do it. You know, for example, the Science Buildings, I was thinking the other day, it might make a lot of sense to not necessarily have them right there in the campus. It might make sense to put them closer to the railroad tracks, just because of the nature of the things that go on in Science Buildings. I'm a science major in chemistry, degrees in chemistry, so, but I mean, things like that, I mean, it could, there could be some benefit to having some conversations on how growth is managed, and that could be very useful, I think, to the college.
Yeah, I, I think that could be useful. Actually, if I'm understanding what you're saying in terms of the Master Plan, the formal Master Plan process, it's more of a, you know, a data and program process. What you're talking about, Lorraine, sounds like it would happen outside that process, so there's no reason that those two things couldn't both go on.
I think, I think there's an urgency in dealing with, with this because for 45 years, maybe longer, you could look at South Silver Spring and you'd be pretty much sure that the opportunity that was there in 1950 is pretty much the opportunity that was, that was there in 2000. But with the redevelopment moving down, all the way down Fenton, and plan to get as far as Sligo right now, and all the other spaces, you know, along Georgia Avenue to the railroad tracks being filled up, if, if you don't think about where you want to be 20 years from now, now, and get a handle on what land you might need to do that, you might well have a program you need 20 years from now that's very large, and the only space you're going to have available to do it is going to be the existing campus. And then you're going to be in a collision, and we've already seen a collision like that, for example, with the hospital, where, you know, the program you need exceeded the ability or the, or the space within, within which to do it. And I think that, that given the fact that you're watching the land evaporate from availability, it would make sense to say, you know, where do we really want to go? And does it make sense to try to lock up some of that land now? I don't think this, you know, if this was 15 years ago, somebody would laugh at you and say, you know, Silver Spring's going to be Silver Spring. But we know this is changing really rapidly.
Yes.
So I would encourage you all to, to at least give a thought to which, where you are going to go programmatically and what the likely land available is going to be to do that, because I think that may prompt some people to act sooner rather than later.
And I would like the community and the city to work very hard for the college, to help them achieve this vision and this dream, because they will need financial support to do that. And I think if we pull together, we can do that. I'm convinced we can. So that's why we're here talking to you.
And they are at the Tacoma Park Campus, in addition to many other campuses, obviously, providing incredible service in the education field. They're going to have a projection of 6,000 students. That's as many as where I work. We have 200 acres, 57 buildings. I think the Tacoma Park Campus is about, how many acres?
We've cottoned.
Okay. Dang, I was, I was gonna say.
I must read my book here.
Anyway, it's a lot less than 200 acres. Might be, yeah.
Twenty, twenty.
Eight, fourteen, eighteen. Yeah. And if you look at the demographics of people graduating from high school, where are they going? They're going to community college, they're going for the two-years comparable education, a lot less money, decide what they want to do after that. So we, we appreciate Dave's responsibilities and what Montgomery College needs to do in the community. So we want to continue, as it's been said, the collaborative effort that, that started and that has worked well the past year that I've been associated with this group, and, but look ahead, as, as Councilmember Eric and Lorraine and Francis have pointed out, so that we don't lose any opportunity for, for acquiring land outside of the existing parcel.
I think we can cover that in October, or fall, presentation, as, as Dr. Stewart promised you. We can, now that we can talk about the future, because we've looked at that far.
And we can, you know, maybe there might be some opportunities prior to that to sort of have a more informal discussion about some of these other issues. So I, I think all of those things are very important. I, I would very much agree with you that Montgomery College is an enormous resource for this community. As this community becomes more diverse, it provides a real opportunity that wouldn't otherwise be available to a lot of people, many people who are new to this country, to sort of get the kinds of skills to become economically self-sufficient. And it's a real enormous resource, and we definitely want to enhance its ability to continue to perform that function. I also want to thank you for a lot of the work that you're doing in the Langley Park area, in, in terms of helping with resources that can be provided to low-income people in that area. So I appreciate that. So, but yeah.
One acre, 19.5 acres. I gotta get that.
Well, thank you all for coming and bringing us this report. It sounds like there's a couple things we need to follow up on, and, and we will do that. And thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, made in council members, thank you.
The final item, but certainly not the least important item on our agenda this evening, is a discussion of awarding a contract for a feasibility study of a potential gymnasium.
Thank you. Yes, on June 9th, the city issued a request for proposals for feasibility study for
Yes, on June 9th, the city issued a request for proposals for feasibility study for a gymnasium addition to this building. Two responsive proposals were received, one from ANCL Architects and one from the Core Group. We had a review committee. It was Ali Khalilian, the city engineer, Sarah Daines, the director of housing and community development, Jim O'Brien, who's both the chair of the Tacoma Park Passade Advisory Board and a member of the Community Central Liaison Committee, and myself. We reviewed the proposals and interviewed the two firms. Both of the firms seemed like good firms, and the interviews were very interesting. The, I'll go to the fees for service, which for ANCL, $36,345, and Core, $46,230, neither of which include reimbursable expenses or fees for additional meetings or services. When we met with both firms and we made the reference checks, the review committee had a unanimous opinion that ANCL Architects would be the better firm for this feasibility study. They did an enormous amount of work before our interview in doing background research about this site. They had met with folks at the county and at Park and Planning. They had assembled documents, and they had a number of questions for us. We all felt that that was important in that we don't want any surprises. We actually do want to know everything that we may face on this site related to this. We don't want any more surprise floodplains, et cetera. And so we appreciated the detailed work that they had done in advance. In addition, they had worked on a site in Washington, DC, that Pepco owned, that had an enormous number of complications related to easements, some federal government control issues, and it was in a floodplain. And the, we felt that they had learned an awful lot about the kinds, the people that needed to be contacted and the rules that applied in those situations. They also displayed quite a lot of familiarity with Montgomery County officials and processes. They have a partner with an architect that has had extensive gymnasium design experience and had a lot of interesting questions related to gymnasium design that he thought would be good to answer in advance, so as not to make any mistakes about what's needed in terms of a gymnasium on this site, given the constraints that we may face. And we also were impressed with the cost estimator that they had partnered with and have used a number of times. The Core Group was also very good, but we did recommend unanimously ANCL Group. The fee for this is to be covered by program open space funds that have been budgeted. We may need to, I need to clear some things with the city manager when she returns, so I did not include a draft resolution in here, a draft ordinance, but we'll have that information for next week's award. Are there any questions?
Can we do this on a single reading next week?
Yes, because the money was in the budget.
Okay.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Yeah, please forgive me, it's late in the evening, and this thing has drug on and on and on, but the Core, and I'm not talking about the meeting, but I mean, the gymnasium discussion is, this meeting's could have gone on and on too. We did some Core samples, and did we, did the council get that report on the Core sampling that we've done?
I don't know. You did not, I'll make sure that you get the copies. We do have...
I would see the interpretation of the results.
And in fact, we don't have an interpretation of the results. I can give you, I can give you the analysis and the report, but one of the things that I think we all felt was that interpreting it for what it really means is something that we need to turn over to this entity. Make sure that you have copies of it. I'm sorry if you...
Yeah, I think that was...
But in terms of kind of the interpretation about what our constraints may be.
Yeah, just getting the report itself, I know that that was, it was coming, it was coming, and it just fell off the radar screen, and I think it would be helpful to get that report.
I'll make sure you have it tomorrow.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
I guess, I just, I would like, I guess I want to see the results.
Absolutely.
But, and I just, that often comes with a preliminary analysis, such as, you know, you're building on fill, you're building on garbage, you've got water...
Yes, there's an enormous amount of detail in the report.
Okay.
What I was saying to Councilmember Elrich is that my understanding of these kinds of things is that even if it tells you what's down there, that doesn't tell you what the weight-bearing capacity of what's down there is, because that depends on what it is you're trying to put there. So one of the first things that I think we need to direct to this firm that is doing the feasibility study is to look at that issue, what's down there, and sort of give us an assessment of what that means, given whatever variables we are talking about in terms of the size and weight of the gym.
My purpose for asking for the report is not so much the content, it's to reassure myself that we've made some progress over the last year and a half.
Well, we're to the point of letting a contract for a feasibility study, but that's good.
We have the things we said we wanted to have before we took the next step.
And we're on the verge of taking the next step.
And I want to take the next step.
My understanding, there was some back and forth between the Community Center Liaison Committee and pulling together the RFP, and the thoughts of the Community Center Liaison Committee were incorporated into the description of the project and what the parameters of the study would be. But it is my understanding that they're also going to be a part of the discussion fairly early on. I don't remember exactly where that comes.
Well, that was part of the discussion that we had, actually, with the firms. And I think the goal is to have a meeting with the Community Liaison Committee fairly early, but once there's a little bit of sense of what some of the options and constraints are, so that it's a helpful discussion. Having said that, in the discussions with ANCL Group, the gentleman who is the architect that deals with gymnasiums, wanted to meet with them actually quite early because of some of the questions that he had. So I feel very confident that there'll be a lot of interaction and a lot of open-minded approaches to a variety of solutions.
That sounds like a good idea. Are there any other council questions? I'm just going to go ahead and schedule this for a single reading next week.
And just, the concept here would be that we would have a, that it would be about an eight-week review period, preparation period of the study, so it would come back in the fall to you.
Okay, then, and there's, but there's work happening. The reason we wanted to do it this month was we wanted the work to begin over August.
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, good. I thank you for clarifying that. All right. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. And thank you to Suzanne for pulling this together on top of everything else that she was doing with the, in the absence of the city manager. Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome.